Good evening, everybody. I will now be calling the City Council regular meeting February 11th, 2025 at 6:30 to order. Please take a moment of silence with me. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. City Attorney, do we have a quorum? Thank you. City Clerk?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on cause of judicial public hearing must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker should be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you, City Clerk. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. We are on Boards and Commissions Item 6A, which is the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee Appointments. As the recipient of State Housing Initiative Program Ship Funds, the city when receiving more than $350,000 annually must assemble an Affordable Housing Advisory Committee to review its earlier plan and to complete a Housing Incentive Strategies Report and recommend affordable housing regulations incentives to the City Council. Currently, there's six openings on this board and three applications for your consideration. The first applicant is Brian Clark, who is currently the Executive Director of the Titusville Housing Authority, and he is a non-resident. The second is Karen McGuire, a retired urban planner and active Florida real estate person, and Elizabeth Ross, a former land and property manager, healthcare industry worker. Staff request City Council to appoint members from the available applications on file for the AHAAC vacancies.
Thank you, City Manager. City Council? Member Nelson?
All of them seem very well qualified. I'm hoping they're here tonight and they're available to speak.
City Manager, do you know if any of these folks are available? Brian Clark is here. Elizabeth Ross, are you here? Karen McGuire? Okay. Well, Mr. Brian?
Mayor, could I speak?
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you, sir. I also want to point out, as you look on the roster for qualifications, it discusses residents of the city for at least one year. That comes from your general language in Section 251 of your code, which says persons wishing to be appointed to the various boards and commissions of the city shall be residents of the city and be registered to vote if of legal age, except that this requirement for ad hoc, temporary, or special committee membership may be a business interest in the city as determined by the City Council and here and after may be provided and comply with ordinance requirements. I know that your Affordable Housing Advisory Committee makeup is set by statute. We've adopted that into our code. So these various categories of requirements are set by statute. I know in the report, it references some information that was received from the Florida Housing Advisory Committee Guidebook, because if you notice, each of the requirements is a citizen, a citizen, that is requirement in each one. The ship statute describes each category as citizen. The statute is not explicit about whether it's a resident of the U.S., a Florida resident, and a resident of the city. However, an effort should be made to recruit representatives who reside in the applicable city or county. So you're supposed to make an effort to have those who reside in the city. The AHAAC report should document any representative who works within jurisdiction but resides elsewhere would have to be in your report. I also wanted to point out to you, as you see on the roster, about residents of the city, and that is in accordance with Section 251 of your code.
Thank you, City Attorney. Member Moscoso?
Thank you so much for reading that. I would like to possibly look at this to make sure that we are uniform in all of our boards, because I think it makes it difficult when we say this board will make an exception and this board, it just makes it easier when we make these decisions. And so perhaps that's something we can discuss later or put on the agenda at another time, but I think it would just benefit us in the long term.
Thank you, Member Moscoso. Member Stokoe?
Yeah, I had similar comments. My question was for the City Attorney. Is this language the same language that we have for our Environmental Commission Board? Do you know? As we currently have a non-resident on that board?
This language applies to your Environmental Commission Board. However, your Environmental Commission ordinance specifically provides for non-residents in given circumstances.
And we don't have an ordinance specifically for this one that allows?
This makeup is made up by state law. We don't create those categories. Those are created by state law. We just adopt those categories into our code. And when we asked the state what they meant by citizen, the response was in the guidebook, to make an effort to have it be a resident of your city.
And then, yeah, as I was?
But to the extent you don't, and it's a business interest, that would have to be documented in your report.
And it looks like in here it's saying, you know, a citizen who is actively engaged in the industry, a citizen who represents employers within the jurisdiction. So that's where, for me, it starts to get a little gray, honestly, because I know we have someone that's not a resident but is working in our city and is actively engaged in this field, so, yeah.
Thank you, Member Stokoe. Brian, can you come up and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're looking to get involved?
Okay, well, I'm your Executive Director of the Housing Authority here in Titusville, and Titusville is my seventh housing authority that I've operated. I've been here a little over a year, and we have big plans on redevelopment as it relates to affordable housing. We've had the same units there since the 50s, so you can imagine the condition, energy efficiency, and also the density is really poor for those communities for affordable housing. So I had an opportunity to meet the new mayor and express my interest in helping, or maybe lending some of my experience to the city as it relates to zoning issues or ways that we can find to develop more or additional affordable housing in Titusville. And that's when he mentioned the advisory board to me, and I submitted an application, and I'm very interested in participating in it.
Thank you, Brian.
Yep, thank you.
Any further discussion for Council? City Clerk, do we have any cards? Thank you, City Clerk. Member Nelson?
I'd like to start it off by making a motion to appoint Brian Clark to the AHAAC Board. I think his expertise will be a great help in looking at our ordinances and figuring out if we can tweak them, if we can make them better, if we can get more affordable housing. So that's my motion.
Second?
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Any further motions from Council? Member Nelson?
I would move to appoint Karen McGuire to the AHAAC Board, basically because she is an urban planner, a retired urban planner, 24 years, so she does have that experience. And so I think that would be a worthwhile member.
I have a motion?
Second?
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion from Council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Does Council want to do anything with that last application? Member Nelson?
I think the last application where we spoke, can we appoint the second lady?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah.
Member Moscoso?
Yeah, I would say I actually had a chance to speak with Elizabeth Ross a few months ago, and she was very interested in getting involved in the community and really had a heart to serve. And so I wish she were here tonight, but, yeah, I would make a motion to approve Elizabeth Ross as a member of the AHAAC.
Second?
I have a motion from Member Moscoso. I have a second from Member Nelson. I gave it to her first, and all the, any further?
Sorry, Mr. Broom had his light on.
Oh, no, sorry. I just, I wasn't sure if Member Nelson was asking me a question, because I couldn't hear her, and I didn't know if I needed to respond.
I got you. Thank you, City Attorney. Any further discussion from Council? All right. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Our motion carries. Thank you very much. City Manager?
Onto 6B, which is the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. The Board of Adjustment and Appeals semi-annual report is included in your agenda packet. No actions required.
Thank you, City Manager.
Onto Item 8C, which is Board and Commissions Application. At their meeting on January 28th, 2025, City Council requested staff revise the current boards and commission application that is completed by applicants to be considered for various boards and commissions. Based on Council's discussion, staff revised the attached application to include additional information on community involvement, potential conflicts of interest, convictions of a felony, civil rights restored, reasonable accommodation for disabilities, protected class that requires personal information be redacted from public records, et cetera. Staff is requesting that City Council review and approve the changes to the Board and Commission's application.
Thank you, City Manager. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, there's been an edit or an amendment to this application that was in the agenda. I don't know, Ms. Clerk, did you pass out copies? Yeah. I just wanted to point out, one of the changes was currently in the application package in your agenda, number eight, talks about, you know, promoting diversity and provide reasonable accommodations for those with disabilities. That is what we do, but my suggestion is that's something we do once they're appointed. We would contact them and ask them how we can accommodate them, not something that we would consider in whether to appoint them. So we've removed that from the application, and that will be an important point when someone is selected to accommodate their disability, but not as part of the selection process. The, and there was, and then number seven, where it says question number eight, that would be number seven, so there's a typo that was corrected there.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Council, any discussion?
I would like to add, I'm sorry.
You're good.
I'm good. I would like to add what crime, what the crime was that they pled guilty to and when it was. And I think it's important because... I would like to add what the crime was and the date of the conviction. And I say that because, you know, obviously it's something that happened 30 years ago, possession of cannabis, that doesn't carry the weight that a theft that was done, a grand theft, that was done five years ago. So I think for us, appointing people, I think we should have at least that information.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Any further discussion for Council? City Clerk, are there any cards on this issue? Thank you. Member Nelson, or, sorry, Member Stokoe?
Yes. I like the potential conflict of interest. The only thing to Member Nelson's point is whatever we ask now becomes a public record, and I'm having a hard time when these are volunteers serving on boards trying to get into, I think, this personal information, I think might prevent some good people from potentially serving. Like even us as running, we didn't have to answer this question. I think that that is on us to do our due diligence on who we appoint to the boards, and I think the, are you a registered voter? And if they're registered to vote, will eliminate, you know, if they're not registered to vote. Can you give me an example of something?
If I was want you to complete your sentence, unless it's a sex crime, you are allowed to register to vote again. Your civil rights can be restored. So that really doesn't answer the question, and I understand it's on them, but I think it's important for us to know, especially like a public entity crime, would you want to put somebody on a board that had defrauded the government? No matter what, those things are public record. I mean, I can go on the clerk's website and pull up people's...
Right. I think that's where I'm getting at. Like, we can, as a board, do our due diligence. I don't, if someone's willing to serve and dedicate their time to serving the city, I don't know, I just think that's a fine line that I personally would rather not have that on there. I feel like it's covered with, are you a registered voter? If you're wanting, if you've already paid your time, I almost feel like they should have an opportunity to potentially serve. So I'd rather not have that question on there personally.
Thank you, Member Stokoe. Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Moscoso?
Yeah, I would agree with Member Stokoe. I think that question is not necessary, and, you know, we all have access to the internet and to these records, and we can go ahead and research if we want, but I wouldn't want that to be out, even though it is public record, but just, I think that would deter people from possibly serving.
Yeah, and to my point, just if they live in the city and they care about their community and want to get involved, you know, depending on what that was, I think we should encourage that. City Attorney?
Yes, sir. One more point we might want to add to the application is, Section 2-51 for Appointments says persons wishing to be appointed shall consent to verification of the information by Council or its representatives. So when they put the information in the application, we might outline that you consent to the city's representatives verifying the information you've provided. You know, if references or, so I would suggest maybe we also add that, that by signing, you are consenting us to verifying the information that you've put into the report.
Thank you, City Attorney, and it kind of reminds me of that question on the job application, right? If they find any of this information falls, you get fired. So maybe we take it that further step of, if we find any of this information that to be incorrect, we could be, it grounds for removal from the board. So, Member Nelson?
So I would make the motion to approve the changes to the Boards and Commissions Application with the additional lines of, you're consenting to us verifying the information.
I have a motion?
Second?
I have a motion, and I have a second.
Discussion?
I was going to ask for a discussion.
Just making sure.
Member Mosco, I'm sorry, Member, Member Stokoe?
Is that with or without the convicted felon portion? Are you, is your motion including that, or is it not? So I know before I vote.
It was including that, but a line, have you been convicted of a felony period, without asking any of the data behind it, but saying, we would verify your information.
And we currently don't have that on there right now?
We did. It was removed in lieu of a probably registered voter, but your code does say that while you're serving, if you are convicted of felony, you are off the board.
Okay, then I'd be okay with that.
Okay.
So Member Nelson's motion did not include the addition of the convicted felon, I do not believe.
That's already on the application.
Okay, so it's good.
Yeah.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further, further discussion? Any cards, City Clerk? Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. City Manager?
To petitions and requests of the public, non-agenda items.
Hello there. Dr. Kathleen O'Rourke, Titusville resident. I received a very odd letter in the mail that I would like to read to you. It's from Stuart Buchanan, PO Box 1545, Titusville, Florida. Still no discernible address. Sent on February 7th, 2025. Dear Dr. O'Rourke, I want to take this opportunity to thank you for assisting us in having new appointees to the Planning and Zoning Board. Our concern was that we had several good people applying for this board, but they had no planning and zoning or even board member experience. We did not want this issue being raised at the podium. By having me apply, I had hoped that all the negativity would be aimed at me, and more importantly, all three minutes of the speaker's time would be taken up addressing my application and not raising any questions about the other applicants. Your comments were delivered exactly as I hoped to perform, and burning through your time attacking me and not our other applicants. It could not have gone better if I held up cue cards to be read off. As it turns out, it appears you worked alongside my sister for many years. She received her PhD from USF and became an instructor both there and Sarasota. I apologize for the tardiness of this letter, but I had been searching fruitlessly for a thank you card with a hand puppet theme. Keep up the good work. Yours truly, Stuart Buchanan. Okay. So I'm going to say this letter makes one wonder a few things. First, which unqualified candidates did Stu and his group want to slide into these positions? But of even greater importance, Stuart refers to we, our, and us. Who are the other members of his group that he so proudly describes as people trying to manipulate the nominating and appointment process to these boards? It seems only fair that Stuart divulged the names of his fellow co-conspirators. Given that his prior election work was the treasurer of a PAC that promoted Andrew Connors for the mayor in a vile campaign full of lies, and the fact that Andrew also set up a sting operation to steal the election, I have to wonder if Andrew Connors is a member of this illustrious group. Finally, I would like this letter and my comments recorded as an official document, and furthermore, that these items are accurately and completely reported in the minutes of this meeting. And I ask, what is it going to take to have an individual investigator look at the dirty tricks attacking our city? Thank you for your intention. And before I go, I do want to express to Tri-Mary Charles's family my deep sympathy. My daughter Sarah died of cancer at the age of 37, and I am so sorry to see anyone else going through this type of experience. I can't imagine how...
Thank you, Dr. O'Rourke.
...you were allowed not to see your child, and I am sorry for what you are going through.
Thank you, Dr. O'Rourke.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robin Johnny B. Dennis. I'm the president of the National Action Network in Cocoa, Florida. This is my third trip up here. I'm here to speak on unfit narcissists holding office as chief of police. The city manager should know that a narcissist has no empathy, no conscience, and in John Lauer's case, the city manager should know that under Chief Lauer's leadership, his policies reflect Jim Crow laws. Black people are murdered by Tattersby Police at will. The back-shooting murders that's taking place here over and over is because the city manager will not do his job and find that narcissist called Chief John Lauer. When I came up here on the case of Jamie Lowry, they gave our chief attorney, Mr. Benjamin Crunk, a 35-page redacted public record request. I made a public record request in the case of Amari Hill, where the Tattersby Police held him down and beat him in the face. Chief Lauer called me and told me I need to see another video, as if I didn't see what I saw. It's time for a negotiation, manager. We are tired of marching. We are tired of protesting. The lid coming out.
Can we, can we please keep decorum, please? There's other folks, folks. We need to keep decorum. I'm going to give everybody an opportunity to speak, but we have to keep decorum so that everybody gets their fair share. I don't think we'd like other people interrupting you. Thank you, sir. Hey. Sir, I'm calling you into order. I'm cautioning you now. Hey. Guys? Sir, you are out of order. Thank you. Sir. I believe you have the floor, sir.
All right. David Flowers, President of the Meadows South over on Chaney Highway. I was here last month. I made a couple of requests. I'd like to say thanks for the city for getting back to me about being willing to clear the land back on the south side of the complex. But I'm here tonight of, one thing, I had spoken with the city manager's executive secretary, I guess, with a request about the easements in that property. I've got a picture here that I inherited from the previous president that shows when Route 50 corporate... that shows when the Route 50 corporation developer came through and developed that complex, it just absolutely flattened everything. Very few trees left, whatnot. And over the years, the residents have taken it upon themselves to plant trees within the easements, a lot of other landscaping. And I've requested an exception to the municipal code that on deed-restricted property, when easements are supposed to be maintained, that we not have to go get tree removal permits to maintain those easements. Because our easements, of course, have city potable water lines running through them, city reclaimed water lines. Our association owns the sewer lines. And FPL, I understand, buried power lines in there with no piping. So any trees that are in there certainly are a threat. And I know of two recent incidents where trees damaged, you know, private owners' water lines in there. So if the city would take a look at providing an exception in its municipal code about having to get tree removal permits for landscaping that's within utility easements, I would appreciate it. The second item I have, I'm gonna ask the city council to take a look. I own a couple of pieces of property. One of them is in the Meadows South, another one. And the millage rates for the city of Titusville are the same on both, where the Meadows South owners have to maintain their own streets. So I don't know how fair it is that owners of properties who have to maintain their own streets have to pay the same millage rate on their Brevard County taxes. I know that would hurt the pocketbook of the city of Titusville to adjust that. But I think it's fair for the council to consider possibly reducing the millage rate on those homeowners who have to maintain their own streets. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi. Ron Vall, 6535, Windover Way. I have had auto pay for my Titusville water account. I received an email that said my payment had been rejected due to an incorrect account number. I called the Water Department, and the representative said the reason for the rejection wasn't the incorrect account number. It was that I was on Chase Bank's negative list. She wanted to explain that Invoice Cloud is the third-party vendor that handles auto pay, and they work with Chase Bank. And that's why being on Chase's negative list caused the rejection. I do not have a Chase checking or savings account and only have a Chase credit card. I emailed Invoice Cloud's customer service to try and see exactly what Chase sees in my account that caused them to reject my auto pay. I also emailed your customer service department and received an explanation that stated, and I'm quoting, "invoice Cloud had an update on their system. Once this update was done, we received multiple payment rejections for incorrect account number. We requested that Invoice Cloud look into these rejections. They found that the new update activated the Chase Bank negative file. There is no way for us or Invoice Cloud to know why your name is on that file, as that's private information. Unfortunately, the only way to fix it is for you to reach out to Chase Bank to find out why your name is on that list," end quote. I later received an email from Invoice Cloud that explained the way someone gets put on this negative file, again quoting, "This happens because of having had a prior return or choosing the incorrect account type with any merchant that also uses Chase Payment Tech as their payment processor," end quote. They went on to explain they would remove my name from the negative file, and I could again use my checking account for auto pay. I wrote back saying, "Well, okay, you may do it for this time, but next time there's a system invoice update, I'll again be put back on the negative list." I haven't heard back from them. I called Chase Customer Service, as per your customer service rep's advice, and they said there had never been a problem with my credit card account. They were not familiar with Invoice Cloud or Chase Payment Tech. This Chase Payment Tech appears to be a complete separate entity from Chase Bank. I contacted Chase Payment Tech. They said they had no way to look up why I was put on the negative file and never deal directly with customers. In my opinion, the city of Titusville bears responsibility for providing a method for customers who get rejected to determine why, so as to avoid this happening after any future system update. As it is, it is a very confusing, non-transparent situation, and is certainly not as simple as just reaching out to Chase Bank as your customer service advisor advised, since Chase Bank has absolutely nothing to do with it.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, just for the public's knowledge, you don't need a card to speak. If you want to speak, you just walk up to the podium and speak.
Dwight Sigler. I just want to cover some things that have happened over the years. 2017, Chief John Lao retired as Titusville Police Chief. Last year, I spoke with former Mayor Diesel and Member Stokel at the Heritage Moore Park. And both of them, being on the council and the mayor, didn't even know that the police chief had retired. He's working on an annual contract that's signed by the city manager. Here it is, 2024, and we still don't have a Titusville Police Chief that works for the city? It takes that long to find? Well, I guess you can't find one, because most of you don't even know they retired. Tonight, I would like to ask Member Stokel, since we spoke at the park, she was gonna check with HR. That's where I got my information from. And she was gonna find out if that was true. So, Member Stokel, I'd like for you to ask the city manager tonight, what is John Lao's status? And we're waiting. And we're waiting. Can some... One of you ask the chief, what is... Ask the city manager, what is the chief's status?
Yeah, excuse me, Mayor.
I'm waiting for him to yield his time. Dwight, are you gonna yield just the rest of your time?
Say that.
Are you... Guys, we're trying... Hey. We're trying to have a conversation. We can't hear. Are you gonna yield the rest of your time so I can defer to council? Or am I...
You can stop my... You can stop my time.
No, I'm giving everybody three minutes. I did answer, and you're out of order, ma'am.
Can I get one of you elected officials to ask the city manager?
Mr. Sigler, I will ask. I'm waiting for the mayor to give me permission, but I will ask.
I'm just asking for you to yield the rest of your time, because everybody gets the same amount of time. So... I understand that. Thank you, Mr. Sigler. You can have a seat now. And, Member Muskoso, can I ask the question?
Thank you, Mr. Sigler. As...
Hold on.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sigler. As a new member, city manager, I would like to know what is John Lao's status?
Sure, we have several employees within the city that are contracted employees.
And he's been a contract employee since 2017?
Ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Member Nelson?
So...
Hey, order. We can't have a conversation.
The way our government is set up in the city is that council sets policy. So we say, "We want to work on infrastructure. We want to work on the lagoon. We want to work on whatever." We transmit that to the city manager. City manager is responsible for hiring, firing employees. We don't have a direct role between us and the employee. So Chief Lao retired, and he was brought back on as a contracted employee. And I will say, that is something that happens in a lot of agencies. It's not just here. I can think of a number of employees that have been brought back on. The good part about it is Chief Lao has experience. He's been here for a while. And so... That's how our government works.
Thank you, Member Nelson. I remind you to please stay in order. Only the person that has been acknowledged by the chair may speak. And it is very hard to have a conversation and let everybody be heard if everybody is talking. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Brianne Robertson, and I'm wearing a few hats here tonight. I am coming to this council on behalf of the Royal Oak Community Alliance. I am the president of that board. I am also on the Board of Directors for the Royal Oak Community, the condo association, and am the president of Royal Oak Ministries. I'm here to address the demolition permit that was issued to the Coulter... Excuse me, Tulon Apartments, and who is the owner of the 2150 Country Club Drive Royal Oak Golf Course. As some may know, I had a contract on that property back in 2019, so I'm very aware of the issues that surround the property. But tonight, I'm here to directly ask the city staff to review the demolition permit that was issued in January regarding the demolition of the buildings, the closing of the... Disconnect of the utilities, as well as filling in the pool with contaminated soil that is coming right off the property. So my three petitions, and I have packets that I will leave with you when I'm done, is that I'd like the city staff to look at revising the permit issued to Wardland Solutions to adjust the proposed scope of work. One, clean fill to be used for all land restoration and backfill. Removal or disposal of hazardous or contaminated material conducted by Wardland Solutions. And that the utilities are not disconnected without express consent from the Royal Oak Lodge, as our FPL Transformer is located on that property. If it's disconnected, 40 families will lose their power. The owner of Tulon Apartments, his name is Aaron Klein, he has not returned any of our calls regarding allowing FPL access onto that property. So we have several pieces of evidence. I've asked for the city records to show that there was discussion about arsenic on the property. We also have soil studies that have been done to show that there's contamination. We have firsthand testimony from a former golf pro who used components of Agent Orange, which is an unforgivable chemical. And so what I'd like to ask again is that this permit is looked at to keep these contaminations out of the soil. You can fill in, but use clean soil. You can build, but use clean fill. We don't want it back in our waterways. And the third problem that we have with this is that the proposed site plan that was submitted to the city on December the 17th is that they are looking to fill in or reshape several of the ponds, which are stormwater runoff and part of the St. John's water management. We can't have contaminated soil going back into our water systems. We already have a few touchpoints with water right now. And it's for the health of our community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I approach you?
Yeah. Member Nelson? One second. Hey, one second. Member Nelson has her light on. She is next. Please maintain order. Order!
Scott. Do we know anything about any contaminated soil?
I can't hear.
We can't hear you. We can't hear ourselves talk. Hey, no, 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 no. She has the floor. Member Nelson has the floor. You will get the floor in a second. You need to keep decorum. I will call on everybody. I am following the rules of council as it's laid out. I would really hate to ask people to leave. Okay? I'm trying to give everybody their voice. Order! Member Nelson has the floor. Member Nelson?
Thank you. I am concerned about the idea of contaminated soil. Do we have any information on it?
Mr. Robertson's correct that the...
Brad, Brad, just wait. We'll wait for everybody to calm down. We won't go anywhere until y'all let us have a conversation about the last person that just came up before us. Thank you.
Mr. Robertson is correct about golf courses, especially this particular one, Royal Oaks, using contaminants in order to control vegetation. But we don't have specifically in our records an environmental report related to that. That's just something I know from standard practice on golf courses. Whether they're doing anything that's out of the scope of work of a demo permit, we will review it. This is the first time I've heard about this specifically, or this request from Mr. Robertson. So I'll certainly look into it myself to see what was issued and what the scope of work is.
I would appreciate it. That concerns me, because as we know, everything that we put on the ground goes into the water eventually. So if you could check on it, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Anything else? Members Muskoso, okay. Ma'am, you have the floor.
I'm Chamari Charles' mom, Samantha Charles. I've been asking since February 7th for answers for my son. I haven't seen my son body at all since he's been murdered by TPD. No answers. Everything I was told was a lie. And I want to see my son. I want... Like, I don't even know where he at. Nobody reached out to me. Nobody called me. Everything... The people that did call me, I was rude at the scene, rude at the hospital. They took me back there by myself to tell me my baby was deceased when they didn't know he was there. Well, I haven't seen my baby yet, and it's been since the 7th. Where he at? I need answers. Why I wasn't allowed to see him, to identify him? Y'all could at least hold me back, open the window, let me see. That's my son. They took my rights, dog. I was violated. I was violated.
Ma'am, please, please sit down. While you're interrupting her. You are cautioned officially, and if you speak out of order again, you will be asked to leave. Thank you. Ma'am, you have the floor.
I want to... I just want to know why I can't see my son. Why the investigation? Everything was handled wrong. Everything. They lied to me in my face. I want to see my baby.
You are officially cautioned as well. And if you speak out of order again, you will be asked to leave.
Nobody, nobody.
We were trying to hear from this woman that's...
I'm getting no answers. Nobody can't answer nothing.
And you guys...
At the end of the day, I get a message to go call these people. Why I gotta call? Why I gotta reach out to y'all? Y'all, I'm the grieving mom. I need answers. Why nobody came to talk to me? Nobody. And then the people that came to talk to me ain't telling me, "Oh, we have an investigation." How long a vestig... I'm still a grieving mom. No matter what the situation... That's my child. I got murdered, running away. No matter what the situation was, they...
She just want to see her baby.
I want to see my baby. I want to see my baby. The whole situation was wrong. I'm hurt, and it's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. I'm just shaking.
All she asked was to see.
I don't want to say... I want answers. Nobody in here can't answer? Chief Larry back there, you want to answer? He can't talk and say, "What's the problem?" Nobody got nothing to say. I want answers. I did not see my baby. They was rude, the whole... So I'm asking you, Mayor, what... Can you ask him? Why I haven't seen my baby? He's right back there. You can't ask him?
Thank you for coming here. We spoke on Sunday. And again, we can't, because everybody's talking.
She want to answer. He trying to answer. He can't.
Thank you for coming here. I can't imagine... I, I can't imagine what you're going through.
I had to come here to be answered, and I'm not getting in here neither.
We as the policymakers don't have those answers that you're seeking. I understand this is frustrating. The investigation is not with our city. And, you know, unfortunately, our hands are tied as well. But I will... Sir, ma'am, ma'am, you do not have the floor. Please sit down. I'm still... I'm officially calling it a recess.
5:55, we're going to call this meeting back to order. Thank you for everybody's patience while we clear the room a little bit. We're still on petitions and requests. Ms. Shifflow, you look eager.
Tony Shifflow, Tropic Street. I want to say first of all, thank you for the way you handled that situation. I'm really proud and pleased. But I just want to remind you, this is the neighborhood you're wanting to gentrify. There's a lot of issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shifflow. Any other petitions and requests not on agenda items? Mr. Johnson? You look eager.
Good evening. I want to first of all, thank the council and the police officers that I believe they did a fine job, that it did not escalate. You too. And so that was, that was a very good point. So, okay, you don't need to bow your heads. Let's just go in prayer. Okay? Lord, we just, we pray for some peace. We pray for justice, just like all the people we're shouting about. We pray for justice and peace. We pray for healing of Charles's mom, Mr. Charles's mom. And we don't know what we can do, but we certainly ask for healing in our, our, our neighborhood and in our hearts, because this is a tough time. And so that's what we're praying for. And everybody says what?
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right. I don't need to talk a whole lot about other things, but I'm, I did do something tonight that I told you I was going to do. So, like my father, I'm in the, I'm in the Navy. Like my father, I'm a freshman engineer. Like my father, I chose a wonderful spouse. Raise your hand. There she is. There she is. And she's, she's embarrassed. She's going to change her color a little bit. So, so thank you. And then I want to introduce you to my wonderful wife. And does she put up with much?
Yes.
Amen to that. Okay. So she, she has, she knows what suffering is. Okay. So, so um...
Is she married to you?
Poor girl. I know. All right.
Of course, that would be a surprise to us.
Amen. Thank you. Okay.
You want to speak next, honey?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Fifty-five, we're going to call this meeting back to order. Thank you for everybody's patience while we cleared the room a little bit. We're still on petitions and requests. Ms. Shifflow, you look eager.
Tony Shifflow, Tropic Street. I want to say, first of all, thank you for the way you handled that situation. I'm really proud and pleased. But I just want to remind you, this is the neighborhood you're wanting to gentrify. There's a lot of issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shifflow. Any other petitions and requests, not on agenda items? Mr. Johnson, you look eager.
Good evening. I want to, first of all, thank the council and the police officers, and I believe they did a fine job, that it did not escalate. You too. And so that was, that was a very good point. So, okay, you don't need to bow your heads, let's just go in prayer. Okay? Lord, we just, we pray for some peace, we pray for justice, just like all the people we're shouting about. We pray for justice and peace. We pray for healing of Charles's mom, Mr. Charles's mom. And we don't know what we can do, but we certainly ask for healing in our, our neighborhood and in our hearts, because this is a tough time. And so that's what we're praying for. And everybody says what?
Amen.
Amen, thank you. All right, I don't need to talk a whole lot about other things, but I did do something tonight that I told you I was going to do. So, like my father, I'm in the, I'm in the Navy. Like my father, I'm a freshman engineer. Like my father, I chose a wonderful spouse. Raise your hand. There she is, there she is. And she's, she's embarrassed, she's going to change her color a little bit. So, so thank you, and then I want to introduce you, my wonderful wife. And does she put up with much?
Yes.
Amen to that, okay. So she, she has, she knows what suffering is, okay? So, so. Poor girl, I know. Amen, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anybody else want to speak, petitions and requests, non-agenda items? Seeing none, city manager.
We are on consent, which is item eight, items eight A through eight F. City council, do you have any questions of staff for the consent agenda? City council, would you like to pull any items for further discussion on consent?
Member Nelson.
Eight D.
Eight D. All right, eight D is pulled, member Moscoso.
Eight E, I'm sorry, eight F.
Eight F. All right, so we got those two items pulled.
City clerk, are there cards for consent?
Yes, we have two cards.
Mayor, I'd like to read the titles with your permission for the record.
Yes, sir.
Consent agenda item eight A, approve the flag and memorial committee use of funds. Consent agenda item eight B, approve the water service agreement for thirty-eight ninety-three Ghost Hawk Place. Consent agenda item eight C, approve the use of the Source Contract zero-four-one-five-two-one RCS with Routeware Incorporated for solid waste routing software. Consent agenda item eight E, approve the purchase of vehicles and equipment for Public Works. And we'll do eight D and eight F separately.
Thank you, city manager. City council? Are we, oh, sorry, do you have a motion? Oh, I thought he already called the cards. Did you ask for cards?
No, I just checked with clerk to see if there were cards.
Okay.
There is, there's two.
Okay.
We have Stan Johnston.
Stan, we're on consent agenda items?
He wants to speak on items B, C, E, and F.
Yes, B, C, E, and F, okay.
Mayor, just for the public, when we pull an item, then they, they can speak on that item as it's pulled. So you, we had two items that were pulled, so if the public want to speak on those items, you can speak on those separately as well.
Yeah, so D and F are pulled, so we're just on A, B, C, and E.
Well, how am I allowed to talk?
No, so you get your three minutes on what you want, but the one we pulled, you get another three minutes for an item that we pulled.
I'm going to get two, three minutes?
If you want to, yeah.
I don't have to, let me talk about F first, okay.
Well, we're not on F.
Oh, we're on F, I can't, I can't do that.
We're on A, B, C, and E.
I'll have to talk on the other ones, okay, I'm going to talk on the other ones first, because that's what you want me to do.
And then if F is, comes up, you can speak on that one.
I'm going to do exactly what you want me to do. I'm going to talk on those, those ones that, and it has to do with, I'll try to be, to be quick, it's similar to what I've said before. I mean, this is, the Water Resources is, is, needs to put their efforts into, into a number of things that they're not doing, and that has to do with like, things that I've written to you about. And that is the how to detect sewer, sewage leaks, how to report them, doing the reporting, and also to turn off the fountains, which Mr. Cook, I believe, is already turning off the fountains, so he's prepared for that. But you have an unwritten policy to leave the fountains on when there's a sewage leak, and, and that's spraying the public with sewage. So we don't want to hear about that much anymore, but I'm asking you to just give it some due consideration, because to me, in my profession, it's highly toxic, just like Agent Orange. Thank you very much. I'll be back on the other one.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City clerk?
The other individual wants to speak on F, so I think we'll wait, correct?
Yeah, I mostly want to speak on another agenda item. Who is that person?
It's Tony Shifflow, and she wants to speak on item F.
Tony, do you, you want to wait till the next round? All right, cool. All right, member Nelson?
I've moved to approve consent agendas, items A through C and E.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, thank you very much.
On to item eight.
Can I just confirm, there was no resolution on those items? Because resolutions were caused a roll call vote, so I wanted to make sure there was.
Oh, there was a resolution on one of them?
I was trying to make sure there wasn't. Okay, just confirm.
All right, you got me second guessing myself, Richard. City manager?
On to eight D, which is the Aetna Employee Assistance Program Amendment Two. To correct the contract terms of the employee assistant program and align with the master services agreement for the administration of services only and delegate to the mayor to execute Amendment Two upon approval of purchasing and contracting city attorney and city manager. What we're doing here is we had two contracts that had different expirations dates, one of them was a seven-year contract, one of them was a ten-year contract. So we looked at aligning those two contracts to both a ten-year contract, which began in 2019, will expire in 2029.
Thank you, city clerk, are there any cards?
No, D, yes, sir.
All right, thank you, member Nelson.
I, I asked to pull this because I was sort of concerned. We have a, the underlying contract was for three years, and correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, and then each year, basically it automatically went into effect. And then, so that was for ten years, and now we're trying to align our EAP program where they both track each other, but it's a def, looks like a definite ten years.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. And one was seven, one was ten.
Right, so do we want to bind ourselves for ten years, or for the remainder of this, which would be six, as opposed to maybe doing a shorter term, maybe being able to get more favorable terms, or do we want to bind ourselves for that whole term?
Now, we've, we have already signed the contract, so you'd be amending a contract, but we're, it, it has already been awarded, so we'd have to go back to the contractor and make sure that that, those terms were acceptable to them.
Hmm, okay. That, that was my question, was do we want to bind ourselves? But it sounds like we've already bowed, okay.
Thank you, member Nelson. Any other discussion from council? All right, seeing none, I'm going to talk. I'll, you can put your light on.
Sorry, can I go ahead and talk about eight F?
Oh, no, we're still on D. Yeah, I was just giving everybody else an opportunity for D, before I waited on D. So probably some of y'all know my background is healthcare, and I have some serious concerns with the initial contract that was written and executed back in twenty, sorry, yeah, yeah, I'm talking soft, hey, I got it, I got it. I have some serious concerns with the contract that was written in 2017. I feel that Aetna is taking advantage of the city, the way this contract was written. I went through, and there's probably a lot of money on the table that is being taken by Aetna from us. I would think that twenty-six fifty-nine P, P E P M is our base rate that we pay to Aetna, if you look on page nineteen of the contract. And I would, I think most people would agree that as a third-party administrator, their job is to coordinate care and benefits, right? Right? Well, if you look on page twenty, they get thirty-seven point five percent of the recovered amounts. Why are they getting our money, that we should not have been paying? I will continue. Third-party claim and code review, thirty-seven point five percent. All right, we're also paying them all these fees for various different things. If you go into the transaction fee, every script you fill, we pay them a dollar. I also have concerns about some legal issues, as, you know, if they're directing specialty drugs to their own CVS, that they're owned by, and not providing another allowable alternative that could save the money. And if you look at the prescription amounts, it, it's pretty crazy, because we're paying nine dollars and fifty-three cents P E P M for risk, risk program fees.
What is that?
Exactly, risk program fees, these are my notes out of the contract.
Okay.
So, risk program fees. Do we request annual reports to see if the metrics were hit? How do we judge whether they're earning their money? Because from everything I've seen in the, the market, I don't think there's any way they could hit the metrics for diabetic or asthmatic outcome improvement percentages. And then the way we're calculating pharmacy, cost share should be calculated on the basis of usually, customer chart, usual, usual and customary are maximum allowable, and the metric they're using doesn't make any sense. Single-source generics should be included in a brand discount, or it's included in a brand discount which benefits Aetna. Yeah, there's, there's a bunch of issues in this contract, and the fact that it was signed for a three-year agreement, then automatically renewed for seven years, is wild to me, because healthcare changes completely year over year. I, I don't know a single company that operates like that, where you're just locked in for, for ten years, given the situation. So if it were me, and I had the end-all, be-all authority, which I don't, it's up to council, I, I would ask some serious questions about who recommended that we sign this contract. Is there, staff, can you provide me with who the consultant is that negotiated this contract with Aetna?
It was Jan Bush, who was our consultant.
Jan Bush, and how much are we paying them?
For the consulting services?
Yes.
I'm not aware, yeah.
Okay. In a group this size, I mean, the consulting fee could, I'm just speculating, could be anywhere from fifty to a hundred K that we're paying them to give us advice. Or they could be making a per-member, per-month, or P E P M, per-employee, per-month fee, which would equate to about the same thing, usually. So the question is, is are they earning their money, is Aetna earning their money? And I don't feel comfortable, as mayor, knowing what I know, of signing this contract. And in the contract, it says we can terminate it. So if, it'd be my recommendation, and I can't make the motion, to put an RFP out for the consultant, because that, that's concerning to me. Member Nelson?
So my thought is that we table this right now, because I had questions also, you have more knowledge than me on this, this matter, but I still had questions. And maybe either get Jan Bush to come back and maybe give us a presentation, because I think we need the answers to those questions.
Yeah, because the maximum allowable chargeables only apply to mail order, and you're not negotiating that on the retail rate for, for prescriptions. Like this is a, we're a big enough group where we can kind of dictate a little bit more than, than what's being allowed in this contract. Again, I made tons of notes, a lot of these are very technical things, because of my, my industry knowledge, I don't want to bore you with all those details, but I think if that's what I found, just kind of looking over it in like twenty minutes.
Yeah.
I, I think that is something to be concerning, and as we move forward and we're looking at cost, that's a big deal, you know, because the, correct me if I'm wrong, but our biggest cost is payroll, our second biggest cost is probably benefits, right? And when we're looking at attracting and retaining top talent, this is critical, to get this right. So that, that would be my, my recommendation. Member Stokel?
Yes, my ask would be, because this is more your area than mine, is all those notes that you read off, if you could send them to us, so if we do have a presentation, we are a little bit more educated on what to ask for, because I don't know, you know, who else you might have had a quote, who else, what other providers were there, and how those numbers that you read off compare to other proposals that, you know, she went through. So I, I just don't know what going rates are, so if you could send that to all of us, that we can look for certain things, that would be helpful.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, member Stokel. The, the issue is, is the person that's deciding whether we're getting a good deal and evaluating it, is the person that's making the money off of it, and that's Aetna. So that, that's my concern, it's the fox guard in the hen house. And if nobody knows, like, how these metrics are calculated, then they're just taking all of our money and going, all right, you owe us more, or, all right, we saved you a little bit, here's a five thousand dollar check, not knowing that there's, you know, a hundred and twenty grand not being refunded to you. Member Nelson?
So my motion would be to table this to March eleventh. That gives us four weeks to have this person here, and there's a meeting at two weeks, but that's sort of short, so four weeks.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, any further council discussion?
Yeah, are you also suggesting that we maybe have a different consultant? Is that part of what I was hearing too?
Yeah, that, that could, if you're going to have a, that should be an agenda item, if you're going to do that.
No, I don't want it in the agenda, I mean, on the motion, I'm, I'm asking him, related to this, for my own research moving forward.
So my thought is, I either do a motion to table it, or I do a motion to put it on the agenda, to look for a different consultant. So before I got there, I was hoping that we could have a presentation by this lady regarding why this contract is good.
Okay.
And if we poke holes in it, then, you know, maybe we need a, a new person.
Okay.
So, let me say, my motion includes having her make a presentation.
All right, so the, the motion is to have, to table this and ask the consultant, Jan Bush, to come in on March eleventh and give a, give a presentation. So that is the, the motion, city attorney?
Does, does the second hold?
Yes.
All right, so I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion on council? Any members of the public, because we didn't have a card on this, no cards on this, but we're making a motion, so I want to give you all the opportunity to speak up. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. I believe we're on to.
Item eight F, which is approve a budget amendment for city council expenses.
All right, member Moscoso?
Sure, so during our last meeting, mayor, you requested that we authorize to attend the Veterans Day event in Cocoa on March eighth, where Congressman Herodopolis will be speaking. The tickets are a hundred and fifty dollars, but I didn't realize that this was a partisan fundraiser, so I would like to ask Mr. Broome, do we have any policies or guidelines regarding the use of city funds for political or partisan fundraisers?
You don't have any specific guidelines under the law that when you are having an expenditure of funds as council members, they ought to be in the proper performance of your duties, and incidental to you performing your duties as council members, as a public purpose. So you need to evaluate any expenditure in that light. So you need to get enough information about each activity that you're authorizing the expenditure for, to see that falls within those guidelines.
Absolutely, so I, for me personally, I don't think that it is appropriate for us to spend funds towards a partisan fundraiser, and so, you know, I want to make sure that our budget remains focused on initiatives that are benefiting our entire community. So I would actually ask that we remove this from our.
Is that a motion?
Yes, so.
Second.
Is there any cards on item F?
We have Stan Johnston. Thank you.
Are we going, just for clarification, are we going to address them one at a time, and you're dealing with one particular one now, or?
Well, the, the motion and the second was to strike the, the funds to be authorized to use for the dinner in, in Cocoa, the Congressman Herodopolis was attending.
Is that an item that you previously approved, so you might want to have a motion to rescind that approval?
Yeah, because that, that item was approved at the last.
So, yeah, I would make a motion to reconsider, or to rescind.
To rescind.
Rescind, I'm sorry.
And I'll second that.
And I believe everybody voted in favor for it the last time, so that's why anybody can make the motion on that, so we have a motion, I have a second. Is there any, correct me if I'm wrong, city attorney, but when I call the cards for this, we're just talking about this specific motion that we're voting on, right?
If, if that's how you're going to handle it, it was written as one agenda item, if you were going to try and deal with it all in one motion, if you want to deal with it one at a time and take a card on each one, then that's up to council.
Yeah, so I think we just handle the one that we're on right now, unless there's any further discussion, because I don't know if there's further discussion on the other items, so. Any, any comments on this specific issue of we are removing the, the authorization and rescinding for the event in Cocoa? You would like, Ms. Shifflow?
Just to clarify, that's the Veterans and Military Appreciation Dinner in Cocoa.
Yes.
Shifflow, historic Norwood House, specifically, the seven hundred and fifty dollars for all, I assume that meant all five members, what about the sunshine law? This is not a public event. Wait a minute, I know, but I prepared this speech.
Please don't interrupt.
And I've got three minutes.
Don't interrupt, give her.
As a registered Democrat, I object, as this is a partisan fundraiser, if you want to go to dinner, pay for it yourself, and if you want to speak with Herodopolis, which was your original intent, mayor, go to his office and do business. Or, you know, the dinner's a hundred bucks each, and the VIP reception is fifty bucks each, so there was your seven hundred and fifty, or you could rent a table for eight hundred dollars and take eight people, you could go and take me. Or you could rent a table for $800 and take eight people. You could go and take me.
Is there any motion to take Ms., i- is there any motion to take Ms. Shifalo to Cocoa? I would love to take you to dinner, Ms. Shifalo. I think we'd have fun. So, any further discussion from council? Alright. Oh, sorry.
Wasn't sure if you were speaking on the, this part or the next part of this one? Okay, um, Kathleen O'Rourke.
Thank you, Kathleen O'Rourke. I just want to mention that part of the problem with this particular item is it shouldn't have been on the mayor's report. Because people had no chance to see it ahead of time. Your fellow council members had no chance to see it ahead of time. The citizens who are watching and paying attention had no chance to see it ahead of time. So, I would strongly suggest that the mayor's report does not include anything that requires a motion or a vote, but simply information.
Thank you. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, did I, did I skip you again? I'm sorry.
Well, we had cards, but wasn't sure if they were gonna speak on this part or the other part of the motion.
Yeah, or do you want to speak on this event in Cocoa? The event in Cocoa?
No, no.
Okay.
I thought she was speaking about, she spoke about the other things.
Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll get to the other things enough. Alright, so that passed unanimously. That is stricken from item, item F, right? Alright, now we'll continue with item F. Any further council discussion on item F outside? Because that event in Cocoa does not exist anymore. I almost, alright, I was about to say I didn't see any, then y'all threw your lights on all at the same time. Member Nelson?
I would like to, um, get rid of the, sorry, sorry, Megan. But the $2,040 for Member Muscoso to attend the Florida League of Cities Fast Fly Inn to Washington.
I already did.
She already went.
Oh, okay.
So, she can pass that.
I don't know if your husband would be happy with it.
I will say it was very beneficial, and I'll give a report about it later.
Well, that's the thing is, you know, the, the more we spend time connecting with our, our, uh, folks that represent us to those higher governments, the more effective we're gonna be. Member Stokoe?
Yes, and to clarify, so I think what's happening is, I, I think we already approved her to go. And because this wasn't budgeted, there's their budget amendments that we're approving now. And so, I had asked the city manager, can you send us our city council budget? And what has typically happened in the past. And so, prior, I typically was the only one on council that was traveling. We were fine within our budget. We have a budget for our salary and then budget for travel expenses. And I think I was the only one using it at the time, so we never really had issues. That would roll over year after year, um, and we never had to do any budget amendments. So, I think what would be important now, as I think others are getting more involved and wanting to go certain places, for us to take a look at that budget and make sure and start to map out. And we can have those discussions. I can tell you the Florida League of Cities items. Others can tell us like other community events that we might want to participate, and we have that. And maybe we consider either what we want to budget for and plan for that. If we want to allocate in, uh, certain amounts that each of us have to kind of go and participate in things that we find beneficial. To the city attorney's point regarding the thing that we just struck, not that that's illegal to do, but that could be definitely an ethical complaint. And so, I think that, that needs to kind of rely a little bit on us as an individual council member saying, you know, is it worth it? There's, there's stories out there. Um, I think somebody went up to the inauguration. And so, that was there. Okay, that, that's an ethical complaint there. So, I think we need to consider that, especially during the budget process. What is important to us as council, obviously you guys know the Florida League of Cities, the National League of Cities, I highly value and I find very beneficial and educational. And so, just start thinking about those things and then things in the community that we should be participating in. And then if there should be any discretionary funds that we feel like we might need individually to do a better job.
Thank you, Member Stokoe. Member Muscoso?
Yeah, I would say with that trip in particular, I, um, it's with the Florida League of Cities. I did ask first if, if Member Stokoe would want to go because she does represent us. And if she was not available, available or wasn't able to, that I would be interested in going. And, and like she said, it, it was extremely beneficial. So, I want to thank you for the opportunity to go, and I'm sorry, I already went and came back.
Yes, this is just the...
I'll take it back.
All these things have already been approved and voted on. We're just, you know, uh, making those budget amendments. Member Nelson?
So, my thought is, you know, it'd be great if we had an unlimited budget and we could go all, all sorts of places and talk to our representatives. But realizing that we're in Titusville and our budget isn't huge. I think we have to be careful about how we're spending that money because you don't want ethical complaints. And we also don't want people saying, gee, you know, you went X place over the weekend, had a great time. So, I think we need to be careful.
Thank you, Member Nelson. I think it is very critical that we invest in going to Tallahassee. If I were to ask you who your state representative is here in Titusville, what answer would I get? If you're in the south side of town, Tyler. If you're on the north side of town, it's Chase. Not that they're bad people. I like them both, but their constituency base is pretty far away. And if you look at the senate, it's the same way. I feel that we need to beat our chests a little bit. Squeaky wheel gets the grease. And we need to come full force in Tallahassee and advocate for the things that are important to us. And I feel as mayor, that's where I have the loudest voice. But again, I'm gonna encourage anybody on council, anybody in the city, to get involved and help Titusville advocate for itself. So, Member Muscoso?
Yeah, I would say, um, 3% of typical cities' budgets come from federal funding and then 30% from state. And so, it's important that our advocacy, like this trip to DC was, I mean, it was good to make those connections, that it is focused on the state. I will tell you, Palm Bay actually has a lobbyist. And so, we, that's why I asked that question. And so, we're using the Florida League of Cities as, um, kind of our open door. But as we all know, lobbyists are kind of running the show. And some of the meetings we got, it was through, um, those connections through Palm Bay. And so, I, I would agree. I definitely want to make sure that we are, um, looking at our budget. But I, I think that we need to focus on that, but also make sure that we're focusing on our legislative priorities. And so, making sure that we're coming together as a group and we're either reviewing what you guys had approved the previous council and possibly, um, just looking those over again to see if that's where we're moving forward. But we, you know, th- this is kind of a different discussion, but just making sure we're on the same page that when, when we are going there, we're asking for the same thing. Because the league also has their own priorities that they're pushing. And so, you know, it's a fine line because you're going with the league and they've got their own issues. And we've got the things that we want to as well. So, I, I think this is a good discussion for us to have as we're kind of moving forward in this direction.
Absolutely, Member Muscoso. And, uh, I wasn't gonna bring this up now because, well, we kind of missed the boat on, uh, hiring a lobbyist, uh, for this legislative session. But I would like council to entertain putting an RFP out for a lobbyist and having that conversation, um, again, at some point. It doesn't have to be immediate because again, we already kind of missed the boat on legislative session for this year. But as we look at budgeting for next year, that's where it's gonna come into play very handily. And, uh, to Member Muscoso's point, we're just kind of piggybacking off of everybody else. We're not actually doing anything for ourselves. And, uh, Palm Bay's not the only city with lobbyists. Most of them in Brevard County, I would say, have one, at least the bigger cities. Melbourne's one of them, you know, Cape Canaveral, Cocoa Beach, they all have lobbyists, and a lot of them are a lot smaller than us. Member Nelson?
A lobbyist is something we have discussed over the years. And, uh, somehow it keeps getting lost in the shuffle. So, maybe this is the time to bring it to the forefront. Because I think if we're expecting to get our share of money in Tallahassee, that's what it's going to take. I don't have a problem with that. But my, I guess my question is, how do we budget this where we don't have three or four, five of us all going to the same place? Is that really necessary? Or do we want to send, as always, Sarah? Do we send Sarah? Now Sarah and Megan, do we send them, uh, to lobby for us? So, that's my question.
Thank you, Member Nelson. I think we all kind of have a pretty good feeling about where we want to go with it. I think, uh, what I would ask council is to make a motion to put an agenda item to, to have this discussion at whatever time council sees fit.
I would make that motion, because I think we need to. And maybe at the same time, discuss the idea of looking for a lobbyist in the future.
A second. So, what you're, what you're asking for is, um, what your city council expenditures are going to be for the next budget year?
Well, looking at how much money we have in the budget. And then looking at what our priorities are, um, for that budget.
We, we budget based on your guidance to us. And like Member Stokoe said, um, we've, since we don't have a lot of travel in the past, we, we've just been rolling it over. So, if you want to build a budget as part of the budget process that includes many more items or, you know, to... We can do that as part of the budget process.
So, maybe at that point. I think right now we wanted to talk about, you know, what, what activities are more important for us to attend? So, like for Sarah, Florida League of Cities, um, I know the chamber's in here. Do, should we attend that or not? Sid Melvin here, should we attend that or not? I think those are the questions we're looking at.
So, as part of the budget build or even at mid-year, um, we can have that discussion as an agenda item where you bring whatever items you would like to attend and city council deliberate and determine by form what...
Yeah, that was going to be my recommendation because I think that's what happens with staff and department heads. So, then Scott can include us to say us, what do we want to propose for our budget? And that gives us time to kind of brainstorm and see like what community events, what trainings.
Okay, that makes sense.
So, can you...
I don't really need a motion for that. We'll just add that as, as part of the budget process that we're gonna do, which is underway now.
Alright, so they're working on the budget process and we'll have those discussions at a later date. Uh, but, but the motion that I was requesting is the discussion on whether we hire a lobbyist.
Do we need a motion?
To put it on the agenda item.
Do we need to put it on the agenda?
So, it's not budgeted this year?
So, it'll be next year.
So, as part of the budget process, again, you can, um, recommend that you guys say, I'd like to do a lobbyist. And then we'll budget for it and put an RFP out and make it happen.
Okay.
Okay, alright, was that, did you make a motion? We don't need a motion.
No, no motion.
Alright.
Withdraw your motion. Friendly second. Alright, good, thank you. Any other cards or discussion on item F?
We have two cards. Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnson, last, last meeting, I voted for some of these things like 2,000 for, for Member Muscoso. And she, she says now she's not, not gonna go, right? Well, you're gonna pay us or what are you gonna do? We, we, didn't, we, we didn't pay you?
Now, this is just a budget amendment after we approved her to go.
Well, uh, I guess what I'm thinking is, is that I approved at the last meeting, okay? I approved her to go. I even approved, uh, um, $485 for, for Mr. Connors. Remember that? I put my thumb up?
Yeah, I appreciate it.
So, uh, I just think it's, while we're doing it, uh, you know, it seems like it should be automatic. And once we did it, we did it, and now we're doing it twice. You're not gonna get paid twice now, are you?
Government's just slow, so we gotta do everything twice.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm saying, is it seems like if, if we make a motion and we do it and then we spend the money, it's kind of, uh, uh, putting it on the budget seems like it should have been automatic. That's what it seems like to me, if we make, you made a vote. And I voted, I helped you guys too on that. So, um, uh, I think it's a good idea to, uh, to have a lobbyist also. Because, uh, we need the money. I mean, even though we're getting a lot of money, I mean, from, from what I'm doing is, is that, is that our river is in bad shape. And we need lobbyists or something to get Tallahassee to, to clean up our river because we can't seem to do it. So, uh, uh, I'm not opposed to what you guys are doing and, uh, but I, I think that was a very good idea. When somebody said, uh, uh, we don't want to, um, do fundraisers. Uh, I think that was, uh, Megan. Thank you, Megan. Okay, thank you, bye.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk, any other cards?
Tony Shifalo, I don't, I'm not sure if you want to speak again.
Thank you, Ms. Shifalo. I have a motion, I have a second. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Well, can you clarify what that motion was?
Oh, sorry. You confuse me. Alright, can I have a motion?
This is one that doesn't need a motion.
Okay.
No, so you, all you've done is you've stricken the $750. So, we need a motion that approves consent agenda item 8F without that item.
So, moved.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. City Manager?
Uh, we're on item, uh, 9A, which is small-scale amendment, uh, SSA number 7, 2024, for a property located at 800 Lane. The city attorney will read the procedures for quasi judicial as, and as well as ordinances number 4-2025 and 5-2025.
During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon, swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. These cards are located on the table at the entrance of the chamber and should be provided to the clerk. Those speaking in favor of requests will be heard first. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, have you received signed oath cards from persons wishing to speak before the city council swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
To staff and applicant, please ensure that all witnesses that intend to speak have signed an oath card and presented it to the clerk. If there's anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on the quasi judicial item, please submit a card to the clerk at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received any expert opinions regarding the quasi judicial item, said visitor opinions shall be disclosed. If written ex parte communications exist, we will verify that the applicant has received them and has had the opportunity to review and is ready to proceed.
Thank you, City Attorney?
Yes, sir. For the public, this first item is small-scale 7, 2024, 800 Lane Avenue. This public hearing will include both the proposed lane use amendment, which is ordinance 4, 2025, and the proposed rezoning ordinance, which is ordinance 5, 2025. The evidence and comments applicable to both ordinances will be presented and heard during the single public hearing. At the close of the public hearing, the city council will address each ordinance separately. At this time, I'd like to read both ordinance titles.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 4, 2025, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60, 1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville by amending the future land use designation on land located at 800 Lane Avenue from downtown mixed-use educational and conservation to downtown mixed-use commercial high intensity and commercial low intensity on 10.19 plus minus acres of property, having parcel ID number 22350400504, providing for severability, repeal conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 5, 2025, an ordinance amending ordinance number 5, 1993, of the City of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the zoning classification on land located at 800 Lane Avenue from the public P and open space and recreation O R zoning districts to the community commercial C C zoning district on 10.19 plus minus acres of property, having parcel ID number 22350400504, providing for severability, repeal conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
The applicant, uh, the applicant has requested a small-scale comprehensive... The applicant, the applicant has requested a small scale comprehensive plan amendment with rezoning to market and redevelop the property for commercial purposes. The property is located at the southwest corner of South Street and Lane Avenue and was previously owned by the Bvard Public Schools and the site Whispering Hills Primary School. At the regular city council meeting on January twenty eighth, the city council tabled this item to tonight's meeting. At the regular um meeting of the planning and zoning on January twenty-second twenty twenty-four. Uh they recommended approval of SSA seven twenty twenty-four to change the future land use designation from downtown mixed use, educational and conservation, to downtown mixed use, commercial high intensity and commercial low intensity. The approval was seven zero. In addition, the planning and zoning commission recommended approval of SSA seven twenty twenty-four to rezone from public to open space recreation to community commercial. With the condition that right turns on Lane Avenue be restricted, that approval was four yes and three no. The members in opposition that voted no feel that the plan development would be more appropriate to zoning. Mr. Parrish is here to give you a presentation on this public hearing of seven twenty twenty-four.
Before Brad does that, I just want to make sure there's an opportunity for any disclosures for ex parte at this time.
City council?
Yes, I did attend a community meeting, I think back in July, put on by the applicant.
Thank you, Mayor Muscat.
Any opinions formed, you disclose, are you able to weigh impartially based on the evidence presented?
No, no opinions formed, thank you.
Mr. Parrish?
I'm going to begin on page three seventy-three of your packet, that's the city staff report. Again, the applicant is asking to change the land use on property that was formerly a school owned property. And as I was already mentioned, it was that was disposed of and was bought for private use. The current land use on that property is education and downtown mixed use and conservation. And the rezoning that or the current zoning on the property is public. So when this was initially brought to us, um we thought this is pretty much going to be an open question as to what really the city council would want to consider to be a good policy for this particular property. Since it's been historically for many decades to be a public use and institutional type use, what is appropriate now that it's no longer going to be that use? And so the question has always been whether it's going to be residential or commercial or maybe some kind of mixture of that. The land use you see along South Street, that's downtown mixed use, allows both commercial and residential uses in that land use currently. The applicant is not proposing to change that land use. The land use that's behind it, education, um is just that, educational institutional type uses. They are proposing to make it a commercial use. So what they will do is they'll change the area that's currently education with the education land use, replace that with a commercial type land use, and I'll describe exactly what what they're proposing in a moment. Underneath that, if this land use is approved and they're requesting a commercial zoning district, the community commercial zoning district on the property, that would cover the entire property. Underneath the downtown mixed use land use and underneath the commercial land uses that they're requesting. Based on what was submitted to us, we reviewed the application based on consistent with the criteria of the comprehensive plan, the land development regulations. And we could not find anything to say that it was inconsistent with the comprehensive plan with specifically what they're requesting. Uh we could not find anything to say that it was that we could deny, so we were recommending approval. However, we do have some concerns about compatibility and some questions about it. I think the applicant tried to address that and I'll explain that in a moment. So there are many avenues the applicant could have considered. We initially thought maybe residential probably be most appropriate because the surrounding properties are primarily residential, and I'll point that out in a moment. Uh the applicant is asking for commercial, so we tried to work with them as best as much as possible within the confines of what tools are available and the comprehensive plan and in the code. To see if there was some kind of solution there to help mitigate any impacts those commercial uses might have on the surrounding area. On page. Three seventy-five of your packet, you'll see a table. And this is not the typical table we generally give to you when we get these small scale amendment applications. We wanted to tailor this so you can see all the options because this is pretty much going to be an open question with this property. You can see the three land uses that are on the property currently under the existing land uh uses table at the top of that page of three seventy-five. It's downtown mixed use, educational conservation, the downtown mixed use allows twenty units per acre. So just that areas where residential will be currently allowed underneath that particular land use, that doesn't mean the zoning allows it, it's just the land use allows it, then you have to find the right zoning to put it underneath it. It also allows an intent um an intensity of five point zero. That means that's a floor area ratio of five that basically is a very intense allowance on that area of the property of non-residential type uses. The buildup potential could be forty-eight residential units and almost a half million square feet of non-residential units, uh square feet. That may not necessarily happen, but it is the buildup potential based on the current land use on that property. And then so on with the education and conservation, you'll see in that same table, the restrictions underneath that, so the rest of the property is very restricted. This downtown mixed use land use category was put on there, I think in two thousand and ten, I think it was what we saw in the history. And that was put on there along large swaths of the property, properties along South Street. So going from the downtown, going west on South Street to a certain point, there were large portions along that frontage that were redesignated uh to the downtown mixed use zoning uh land use category, including this property. On the next table there, you'll see proposed use and ta- and future land use, you see the downtown mixed use is about two point four three acres existing. The commercial high intensity land use that they are requesting would be about five and a half, a little under five and a half acres, so it'd be the middle portion of the property. And then the back half of it, the lower half or the south half of the property or south third of it, rather, would be uh they're requesting a commercial low intensity land use. And you can see then that the density intensity changes as a result of that in that same table, including the buildup potential. On the proposed use and zoning, which is the last table on that same page, three seventy-five of your packet, the table on the bottom. You'll see now I've already spoken about the land use now underneath that the land use is approved, the rezoning they're asking for is for the entire property to be commer- community commercial. That allows a maximum building coverage of thirty percent. So only thirty percent of the entire property can be covered by building. So you can see then that and other standards within the zoning district itself will further reduce the buildup potential on that property. If this land use and the zoning rezoning is approved. Other standards that are specific to the community commercial zoning district, the maximum building ground floor coverage, I'm sorry, the maximum height would be would incre- would basically say that. There'd be no height in the community commercial zoning district. Except that you'll have to increase your setback for every foot higher that you above thirty-five feet. That's what the community commercial zoning district says. So basically you can, you'd have to taper your development, if you can have something really tall, it'd have to be primarily in the center part of the property. Now, if the land uses are approved as proposed with the downtown mixed use currently there, the community commercial, commercial high intensity in the middle part. And the back half, the third of it, which is the the south portion of this property with the commercial low intensity. What that would mean is that. The council would have to approve anything that's thirty-five feet or above thirty-five feet in that area that's got the community or commercial low intensity on the south part of the property. That is an existing condition of the code and the applicant was agreeable to propose this community or commercial low intensity land use on the bottom portion of this property. With that condition in there that's currently in the code. So in other words, if they could not propose anything that's above thirty-five feet unless it comes back to you with an approval. I'll explain why they did that in a moment when I show you on the map because it is next to residential lots on the south part of that property. On page three seventy-six of your pack. This is page four of the staff report. I'm just going to briefly read the second or the last paragraph there. The proposed land uses will provide a graduated pattern of development from State Road four oh five, South Street, to the rear of the property. You'll have the downtown mixed use land use allows a mixture of commercial and residential uses with an allowance of the twenty units, twenty dwelling units per acre and a floor area ratio of five. The commercial high intensity and the commercial low intensity land use categories are limited to commercial retail uses with a floor area ratio of one. There are additional limitations associated with the commercial low intensity, as I've already described. Specifically, section two twenty-eight dash fifteen of the code states development which is to contain more than one business use in a single center or as part of a single development. The maximum allowable leasable floor area for the total development shall not exceed seventy-five thousand square feet, forty thousand square feet if the development does not contain a retail, food market, or supermarket. This is specific to the area that would have the commercial low intensity land use in the back. They're very specific, the commercial low intensity actually operates almost as an overlay. And there's a separate section of the code that talks about that applies very specific standards there or limitations in areas that have that commercial low intensity. So this is another reason why the applicant agreed to put the commercial low intensity on that bottom part of the property because of these additional limitations. To help mitigate any impacts of commercial uses against the residential there. Again, I'll show you where that is in a moment. On page three eighty-one of your packet. You'll see the bot- the top of that page, again, those constraints. These are site requirements that are specific to the areas that have the commercial low intensity land use category. And you'll see under paragraph A, paragraphs one, two, and three, those are the specific standards to properties that have that low, commercial low intensity. Again, what I just read is seventy-five thousand square feet threshold or to forty thousand square feet maximum. You also have no more than two individual uses shall contain more than three thousand square feet, this is very specific limitations. In addition to the maximum pervious surface coverage, shall be seventy-five percent of the gross area of the site. And that includes buildings and any parking areas. On page three eighty-four of your packet. Uh we began the rezoning criteria, we found that the out, the community commercial, I'm sorry, the community commercial zoning district is consistent with the land use categories. So again, these three land, these two land use categories are approved with the existing downtown mixed use. We believe that the community commercial zoning district is consistent with the scenario if those land uses are approved. On page three eighty-six of your packet. The bottom of that page, which is page fourteen of the staff report, I'm just going to highlight or list off some of the highlights of findings from the staff analysis. The current educational land use designation and public zoning is limited to public institutional uses only. So they are unable to use the current zoning and land use on the property for a commercial or residential use. The environmental report determined that no wetlands are present on site, the current conservation land use designation and open space recreation zoning on the west portion of the site may be amended to reflect that these are upland areas now. So that can that, those designations can be removed. The amendment will increase the cumulative area acreage of non-residential future land use categories to provide goods and services to residents. So this is an opportunity to create more commercial land use inside the city. Commercial uses on the subject property would offer a high degree of accessibility of non-residential goods and services to the surrounding residential properties. On the next page, designated the south portion of the subject property, commercial low intensity future land use helps protect the adjacent single family residences. And another finding, if city council is inclined to approve the requested future land use change to commercial high intensity. Then staff recommends approval of the rezoning to community commercial as consistent with those land use categories. However, there are potential issues here. Surrounding area is predominantly residential in nature, so this is a question about compatibility. The a commercial feature land use designation at this site does not support a high degree of clustering with other commercial land uses. You'll see that in some of the comprehensive plan policies we have identified and how we address them in the staff report. Certain auto oriented uses permitted in the community commercial zoning district may be incompatible with the adjacent single family development if they are the predominant use on the ten acre property. So that was another question that we brought up. However, based on those findings and even the things that we found that were questionable, we recommend approval of the land use scenario, including the rezoning. On page three eighty-eight of your packet. I do want to point out a correction. Uh just before the meeting, we had found that the legal descriptions that were included in the exhibit A of the future land use uh ordinance on page three eighty-eight of your packet were incorrect. We got those corrected by the applicant and verified by our surveyor. They do accurately describe the areas of the land uses that will be uh redesignated on the property. And so we did hand out to you on your dais the corrected ordinance. If you look at page three of that corrected ordinance. There is a illustration that goes along with this that would be if this is adopted, that this survey will be part of it and the applicant will probably distribute this this exhibit to you. But basically where it says parcel one, that is the community, that is the commercial low intensity, that is a legal description describing an area that would be commercial low intensity. On page four, where it says parcel two, that is the area describing the uh, that is the legal description, rather, that'll designate the area as commercial high intensity. And then lastly, on that same page where it says parcel three, that is the legal description of the area currently designated downtown mixed use. So again, if this land use is approved, the ordinance you have before you, the hard copy would be the effective ordinance. On page four of four of your packet is the environmental report and it just confirmed our findings that there are no wetlands on the property. On page four fifteen of your packet. Is an aerial of the property and you can see the existing development school on the property. And you can see the orientation of South Street or the location of South Street and Lane Avenue. On page four sixteen of your packet, you'll see the land use map. And you see on the left side of that screen on page four sixteen, the existing configuration of land uses, downtown mixed use, conservation, and the education. And on the right side of that same page, you'll see the configuration of the, if the future land use ordinance is approved. And so that map on the right side of page four sixteen corresponds with the legal descriptions that I just pointed out to you in exhibit A of the revised future land use ordinance. And so you can see where it said has the commercial low intensity land use in the south part of that property adjacent to what's single family. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of this, uh four to three, with the condition that right turn lanes on a lane not be there, that the you'd have to turn left. The staff can't find a reason why that's necessary, um but that that was their recommendation. The as already stated, the minority opinion of the or the vote on the planning and zoning commission thought that a plan development rezoning tool with a master plan was probably a more appropriate option. On page four seventeen of your packet, you'll see the rezoning map. And so you can see the entire property has the O R zoning, open space and recreation, and P public zoning. And on the right side, the entire property will now be community commercial. The applicant did not provide a concept plan, so we reva- we evaluated this based on the highest intense uses allowed within that zoning district. With that, I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish, member Stokel?
Yes, I have a couple of questions related on page four sixteen is what I'm looking at, the proposed future land use map. One, can you clarify why that conservation strip is being removed?
There is not a wetland there.
So, okay, well, once they did the survey, they found that that, okay, so there's no issues there. Um I think you said the community commercial zoning, they are only able to have a building that covers thirty percent of the property, is that correct?
Zoning district says that, yes.
So what would be the other seventy percent, what would they?
That's lot coverage, so that's impervious coverage. So that would include building, parking lots, driveways, anything of that sort, recreational communities such as basketball courts, whatever that might be, wherever their water can't percolate.
Okay, um and then. Can you just explain the land use being the DMU, like the downtown mixed use, the commercial high intensity, commercial low intensity? I know you said the height was a reason for the low intensity being there. What does that, so when you have those three different land uses, but the zoning would be all community commercial, realistically, what could they do there? I guess a building that's. I guess a building that's higher than 35 feet in the middle portion and then have the driveway or the parking lot surrounding it, like what? Yeah.
So, and if the land use is approved, we would look at the zoning, the community commercial zoning to see what they can be allowed to do. The biggest constraint can be in the back part where the community commercial low intensity is located, because that will work as an overlay on top of the development standards we have currently in the community commercial zoning district. So for example, if this CC, the community commercial zoning, allows them to go up to an infinite, you know, whatever height that might be, they'll have to increase their setback. But in the area where it's got the commercial low intensity, there's an additional restriction on that height. If they go above, if that area, anything in that area goes above 35 feet, they'll have to come back to city council.
Okay. So that's kind of, the land use is guiding what could potentially be there essentially?
That's basically how the, the code is written. It identified areas of commercial low intensity land uses as an overlay on top of any other zoning district underneath it with additional restrictions.
Which would give them, because it's abutting low-density residential, some buffer of what could?
Something we suggested. They wanted to go forward with the commercial land uses and commercial zoning. We believe that one way to mitigate that impact of the uses that are allowed in that zoning district was to apply the commercial low intensity in the back there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Muscoso?
Brad, could you read off the allowable uses for high-intensity commercial and low-intensity commercial?
They're commercial uses, commercial retail. So the allowable uses would be in the zoning district.
So could you read off the uses for community commercial?
Sure.
Thank you.
As I'm bringing it up, I can tell you off the back that they are, anything that's primarily retail, a big box store probably is not consistent. So there's, when you look at the regional commercial zoning district or the community commercial zoning district, they're very similar, but the regional one allows a little bit more flexibility as types of uses. grocery stores would be consistent with that. Automobile, retail.
Would that be considered a car lot?
Yes. Well, not, you know, dealership.
A dealership?
Yeah. Some of the things that are listed are, you know, small arts and crafts, art studios, bicycle shops, ceramic shops, restaurants, delicatessens, emergency clinics, medical clinics, offices, furniture stores. Yeah, again, ice cream, you can have.
But storage units would not be permissible?
Not in that zoning district.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Muscoso. Member Nelson?
Brad, I have to tell you, the high intensity sort of bothers me in part because I'd rather see it clustered with other commercial uses. And secondly, because of the residential areas. So do we have any limits on that high intensity?
Well, the high intensity land use just allows what zoning is underneath it. It doesn't have just special conditions like in the code, like it does, like the commercial low intensity does. So if the entire property, as they initially asked for, was designated as commercial high intensity, and then they asked for the community commercial zoning, whatever is allowed in the community commercial would be allowed, basically. So what I described earlier was the uses and the development standards of height and setbacks, just what's applied in that community commercial zoning district would be allowed without any other restriction.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Nelson. City Clerk?
Hi, good evening. My name is Kelly Delmonico. I'm a planning consultant for the current owner of this property, which is 800 Land LLC. I really think to get a better understanding for why we're making these requests today, these various future land use designations and the single zoning classification, I'd like to talk a little bit about the relevant history of the property. Could I get my presentation by chance? Thank you. Perfect. So as was explained before, this property was owned by Brevard County Public Schools and they did declare this a surplus property back in 2021. It hadn't been used as an educational facility in years and it's dilapidated, so they were ready to, to move on from that. So in 2022, this actually went under contract by a previous client of mine, not the current owner that I'm representing tonight, who was actually interested in rezoning this property to R3 multifamily residential, which matches the R3 residential zoning just to the west of this property. So before we proceeded with any applications with my previous client, we held a community meeting with the neighbors. So this was back in April 2022. We held a community meeting. It was about 20 people, maybe a little bit more, but it was well-attended at the senior And here's the concept plan that we showed them at that time, which was in line with the R3 zoning. So this was multifamily, multi-story apartments laid out in a grid pattern, as you can see on the plan there. We had really good feedback at this meeting from the community. They wanted us, number one, we were showing two driveways on to Lane Avenue and they said, you know, we'd like you to get rid of the southernmost driveway and move the second driveway as far north as possible. The biggest concern of this neighborhood, which they will tell you today, time and time again, is cut through traffic. Traffic comes from South Street, South Street, down Lane Avenue and cuts through their neighborhood. So their issues are with existing traffic and they're worried that any additional traffic on this site will direct traffic south through their neighborhood. So that's a separate issue, but one I completely understand. There was discussions in the neighbors about even closing off that portion of the street to vehicles. So it's only pedestrian walk-through. The other issue they brought up was to have an additional or a wider sidewalk on Lane, additional buffering to the south, which is where the residential homes are, and place the buildings as far north as we possibly could. So overall, the community understood that with the existing institutional and public zoning that the property has, it needs to change to be able to have private investment come in here. So it either needs to kind of go residential or commercial or mixed use. However, the consensus I got out of that group back in 2022 was they weren't comfortable with the change to residential. That was due to perceived noise of residents and vehicles and the likelihood of taller buildings and the stacking of apartments, crime, things like that. That's why they weren't really comfortable with the idea of residential on this property. Ultimately, the potential buyers stepped away and I didn't hear anything again on this property for a little while. So then, more than a year later, in 2023, I was connected to a new client, who's my current client tonight, who now owns the property, who was interested in purchasing the property from the school board. So before they purchased the property, they had a conversation with me about, you know, what can we, what's a logical thing to use this property for? And I expressed to them the feelings of the neighbors as it related to the residential use that we had brought forth before. So we decided on that point that he was going to go ahead and purchase the property and maybe seek something along the lines of a commercial use. So that started us on our next journey, which was a second community meeting. So in August 2024, I held another meeting with the community in the same location at the senior center. And we, again, we had at least 20 people in attendance at this meeting as well. After considering the previous feedback from that community, as I said, we brought forth a commercial-type situation plan for them to look at. And we were very clear that this is not a binding site plan that we're showing you. It's what we have in mind right now. So this conceptual plan that you can see on the right, I don't know if you can see it better on the screens in front of you. It's kind of hard to see color. It is in color, but it looks kind of like it's black and white there. But the north side of the buildings along South Street, those are two retail buildings. Those are two large-scale retail buildings. And then you see some orange rectangles coming down the side. Now, what this is showing is actually this concept for a mix of indoor and outdoor recreation along with retail or restaurant space, along with whatever types of parking and stormwater we need. This is not an engineered plan. This is a conceptual bubble plan that we wanted to talk through with the neighbors. So again, the retail buildings we're showing along South Street, as you would place any building in a commercial scenario closest to South Street. Again, the feedback, they did not want buildings along the south side. But really, this is an ideal use for what we're seeing as indoor pickleball and outdoor volleyball courts or other different types of sport courts. That's what all those orange rectangles are, is just an idea of outdoor volleyball courts. We showed a sidewalk along Lane Avenue, only one driveway onto Lane as far north as we could put it, while it has to still be a certain distance from the intersection, and then a secondary drive onto South Street as far west from, as possible, to maintain distances between the intersection. We're also showing a very large buffer to the south. You know, we don't have an interest in putting a building anywhere near that south property line. So what's really important to note, and we pointed this out at the public meeting, was that outdoor recreation requires a conditional use approval from the city. So if we're approved for a zoning that allows it, then we can move forward with a conditional use to do these types of recreation. To be able to request indoor pickleball, which is indoor recreation, and outdoor volleyball, which is outdoor recreation, we needed to request the CC zoning, which is why you're seeing the CC zoning. So why? It's because CC zoning is the lowest intensity zoning that permits both indoor recreation and outdoor recreation as a conditional use. I don't, I'm not aware of any other zoning district that would allow us to do that. So in order to allow for the CC zoning district, then we step back to the future land use designation. So the only options for the CC zoning, in addition to the DMU, which is already there, is the commercial high intensity and commercial low intensity. So commercial low intensity, that would have been great if we could have just put that on the rest of the property, but there's a reason that we cannot do that. It's because of the section of code that Brad was pointing out that has all the restrictions. So I did give a copy of that to you, just so you could kind of look through. I don't want to read it word for word, but subsection A1 and A2, essentially what that is saying is if you're in commercial low intensity and you have more than one business, which this is a 10-acre property and we do want more than one business, you cannot exceed 40,000 square feet if you don't have a grocery store on the site. So 40,000 square feet, looking at the site, it's not, it's not big enough. No one can make a deal work like that if you're looking at a multi-tenant building to have it be under 40,000 square feet. In addition, no more than two individual spaces shall contain more than 3,000 square feet. So what this is saying is if you're in an area of commercial low intensity, you can't have more than two, 3,000 square foot units. So you're talking a little, a little tiny plaza that's connected to something that, and it doesn't, it doesn't work for a size like this. So that's why we didn't originally seek commercial low intensity for the entire site. So through working with Brad and staff, we said, okay, we could take just that south portion of the property, which we don't intend on putting a building on anyway, that can be commercial low intensity. So in case everyone does build on it in the future, it's very restricted to how much square footage can go there and what that height is. So at the community meeting, to kind of roll back into that, at that time, we were still asking for commercial high intensity because we hadn't come to this idea yet with staff to step that down. So the feedback we received from the community at that second community meeting was, you know, concerns about trespassing in the vacant school building, concerns with the Live Local Act, cut through traffic from Lane Avenue through the neighborhood. Again, that was, that's a biggest point of contention. A request for the landscape buffer to the south, that a school, if it reopened, would cause more traffic, that rezoning would allow for something new that maybe the neighborhood could use. And overall, to me, it seemed like the neighbors possibly may prefer a commercial use in this over the previous residential use that we had indicated a couple of years ago. So again, as I went over, the result here was this step-down effect. You can see on the north portion of the site, the blue DMU, then it steps down into the red, commercial high intensity, and then the south 200 feet, and that's what you can kind of see that survey that I gave you. That's parcel one on the south. It's 200 feet of commercial low intensity. But we're completely fine with commercial low intensity as we would push all the development towards South Street anyway. So I did, prior to these meetings, I did send out another letter to the community to let them know that the previous request that we had made for commercial high intensity was now going to be commercial high and commercial low intensity. And I did call them and send emails to the ones I couldn't reach. So again, we're removing that conservation area since there's no wetlands there. And the current proposed future land use designations allow for a step-down approach to intensity to allow more intense development near SR 405 and less intense development to the south, where adjacent to single-family residential. And then from a zoning perspective, you can see the change to completely CC. We would like to request the commercial high intensity, commercial low intensity, future land use, and CC zoning, since it is the least intense request we could make to allow us to explore the options of indoor and outdoor recreation in the future. CC zoning is consistent with CHI and CLI future land use designations. We are consistent in many ways with the comprehensive plan and would need to also be in compliance with the land development regulations at the time of conditional use or site plan. Approving the zoning will allow for neighborhood commercial and recreational needs to be met. This is located in an area that is high residential, high-intensity residential to the north and west, and single-family to the east and south. The current institutional future land use and zoning does not allow for private development or redevelopment, and we are requesting what we believe to be the best commercial future land use and zoning, given the circumstances. The property owner would like to redevelop the property in accordance with the city's COC plan and land development regulations. At P&amp;Z, we agreed to limit access to Lane Avenue to prohibit right-out turns. Again, that's all coming from, you know, the issues they're having with cut through traffic. I did want to point out one thing, though. The, the people who dissented on the vote for zoning brought up the idea of a PUD, which PUD, for many people, that works great. That works really good for developers who are coming in where they're either a single user or they're building things for spec, or they have this whole neighborhood built out and they know exactly what they want. Then that's perfect. They tie themselves to that plan. They can be very detailed. In our situation, that's not the way that this developer works. He doesn't purchase properties, build a bunch of square footage, and just wait for people to come. The way that this one works is he does joint ventures with different types of tenants. So for example, an entertainment restaurant-type venue might come to him, or he's got a couple pickleball people he's talking to. But what needs to happen is the zoning has to be in place for these joint ventures to happen, and then together they invest in this and build. So today, for us to do something at the level of a PD, it's just not possible since things would change over time. There are definitely concessions we're happy to make, but with this zoning allows us to move forward, we could bring forward a conditional use, which would be tied to a site plan at that point. So a PD is a little, it would, it's premature for the way that this property owner develops. And I can get more into that if you have questions on that. But we are here to answer any questions and have an open dialogue with council, and we want to work with the city and provide a development that really benefits the community.
Thank you. Member Stokel?
Yep. I think you kind of already answered this. The reason that you're not doing a binding concept plan is because you're just not, the applicant or the owner's just not sure yet?
Right. We didn't want to have, so the concept bubble plan that you're seeing here, so we didn't want to be bound to that exact footprint and those exact things, because this isn't an engineered plan. But that's why we thought the step-down approach with the future land use was good. But this is in keeping with the vision for the site. And we know- And we know we're not tied to it. But things like a large setback along the back, those are all things that we are happy to comply with.
And can you just clarify the reason why the commercial low intensity, as to Member Nelson's point, she wasn't too keen on the idea of the commercial high intensity? How would that change your project, if we were to do low intensity?
Sure. Then, we couldn't exceed 40,000 square feet on the entire property, which, which, it's very tiny, and I can't read what I have in front of me right now, but that's over 40,000 square feet, and that's not even that much building that's on the site. So, if you came in here, even just like an office building or something, you would exceed that in a second. And then, it also wouldn't let you have more than two units over 3,000 square feet, and that's very small.
Okay. And then, this question's for Brad. Brad, given they're not proposing a binding concept plan, is there anything that we, as council, could impose to ensure that they won't go with the most intense use potentially on this, other than a binding concept plan? Or that would be the only thing? I know that, I'm sorry, that's a, I can't think of anything, so I just want to make, be clear.
The code encourages an applicant to provide a concept plan that becomes then binding with the rezoning. Outside of that, I'm not familiar with conditions to be applied.
Okay. And then, my last question is, if we were to change this land use, would this, now that it would be commercial, open it up to a potential live-local applicant?
That's true.
Okay. So, something to keep in mind.
And if I may on that, I've had another client that has come to try to use the Live Local Act here, and it's pretty impossible to do. So, I wouldn't worry about it.
It would have to be mixed-use, because of our commercial space, so...
Correct. And it would all have to be under the same ownership and couldn't be subdivided. And so, you'd have to find an affordable housing developer, who would also own a whole bunch of non-residential space as well, and keep it under the same ownership. So, it's just, it's written in a way where you won't get any Live Local Act projects moving forward.
Because of, what would be the reason why?
No one can structure something financially where they're building affordable housing, and then also maintaining and owning commercial square footage.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Moscoso?
What kind of developments have your clients, your client done in the past? Has it been mostly residential, or have you done a development like this before, when, where you build, and then you, you know, you're trying to seek people to come in and to fill these spots?
Sure. We can have him come up and talk about his structure.
Absolutely.
Do you want to come up, Jacob, and talk about how you kind of put the deals together? Yep, perfect.
I mean, I love the idea of a pickleball court. It's just, it, it almost sounds so unbelievable, if I can be honest. It sounds too good to be true, so...
Yeah, he can fill you in on who he's talking to.
Okay.
Also, it's very loud, so it has to be inside.
I'll try. I'll do my best. Hi, Jacob Mermlstein. I have done numerous deals in numerous states. I live in Miami. For the past 10 years, I lived in upstate New York the rest of my life. As far as this particular plan, when I looked at the property, and I spoke to Kelly, and she told me that residential won't work for this place, I started looking. Actually, whoever called me, the broker that called me about this, knew that I'm not, I'm not so, I, I don't only go residential, only commercial. I like what Kelly said. I like to do, I find a property. I like to think of something that the community needs. I'm here to make money. It's a for-profit. I'm, I'm being totally honest. I, I've studied Titusville. I've seen there's numerous vacant lots, or vacant buildings. I don't want this one to look like that. I spoke to a couple of people, and all of them told me that pickleball is something that's really picking up all over the US. And when I looked at this property, it's 10 acres. It's, it's on a busy street, but also next to residential. My idea for this is that people, kid from, from 10, five-year-olds to 100-year-olds, should be able to walk there, drive there, and have fun, and have a nice recreation. So, I spoke to three companies that do pickleball. You can Google it if you want, Pickleball Kingdom, Pickler, and the third one is a funny name. Doesn't come to mind. It's come to you, Kelly?
It sounded like Dill.
Bill, Bill Binkers. Bill Binkers.
I think it's Dill Pickle.
I, I said the same thing. Who would, who would know, who would put the name of Bill Binkers together with pickleball? So, I'm like, I don't know why they did it, but they are three companies. Some of them already have franchisees in this area that bought the region, and I'll have to deal with them. And that's the biggest reason why we can't go PUD, is because each of these companies have different concepts of layout, like where columns are supposed to be, because you can't be middle of a pickleball or a column for the, for the roof, or whatever. And none of them want to really sign up for anything. They don't want to invest engineering or anything before I have zoning. They're telling me, like, God, I'm going to invest in engineering and everything, and then you're not going to get the zoning. I mean, why? As far as the, as the other retail, I spoke to Chuck E. Cheese. They are interested. So, that's the concept that I have in mind. And if Chuck E. Cheese is not going to be there, it's this concept of Chuck E. Cheese. I want, I think that area can use it. I think that area is primed for it. I remember by the community meeting, I had some of the staff at the seniors' center come over and say, "We can't wait for something like that." The concept plan that we have is pretty much the way I really want to build it, some sort of retention pond around with a walkway. And I even spoke to the seniors, to the staff at seniors' center, and they were really, like, "We can't wait, and we'll walk around every morning," or something like it. That's the same reason, which I know we'll have to come back to get approvals for, for the outside, the... The what? The outdoor recreation. I know that's not something we're seeking today, and I know that creates noise, and I'm not here for my neighbors to say, "Hey, don't go to this guy, because, you know, he just shoved it down our throat." I'm not here for that. I want my neighbors to come. I want my neighbors to be my customers. I want all of Titusville to be my customers. I'm being honest. And I would appreciate if you guys approve it, because I really think it's something that Titusville can use.
Thank you, sir. Member Moscoso?
I would say our mayor is bringing in a Chick-fil-A, so perhaps this would be a good location for it.
Chick-fil-A? I hope, wish they were open on Sundays.
They like more highway access.
Yeah, yeah, I figured so.
But, Member Nelson?
So, I understand you would be willing to do a larger buffer on the south side?
Definitely.
What are we talking about? I think the buffer right now is 20 feet?
For commercial, it's 10.
Okay, so...
I mean, we wouldn't mind if we didn't put a building at all on the whole 200-foot commercial low-intensity portion.
We have no issue with extra vegetation. Like Kelly said, the no right turn on Lane. I mean, I know by the meeting, the community meeting they brought up, that that street was actually closed, and it was opened, I don't know, five years ago, 10 years ago, or something like it. We're open for that, too. Like I said, I'm not here to shove something down someone's throat. I'm here for business. And I think Titusville's primed for that, and I think Titusville can use it, can use it.
Okay. Thank you. And Kelly, thank you for your explanation, because that really helped.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Stokel?
Yes, I think Member Moscoso brought this up. Could you just briefly explain some of your other developments that you have done elsewhere?
So, I've done JV with, I'll, I'll, I'll say what I did, but I can't really say the companies, because I don't know if there's anything as far as privacy or other concerns in contracts. So, I've done something, office location in Indiana, Indianapolis. Actually, we have contracts with the state there. One of the offices, like, also a franchise. I've done in Orlando, something similar to pickleball, also entertainment. I think Orlando, I can probably say it. I won't say the name, but it's like one of those franchises that have also games like Chuck E. Cheese, but not Chuck E. Cheese, if you guys want to figure it out. I didn't say nothing. I've done, I've done residential in central Connecticut, New Britain, Connecticut. Those are basically, that I've done over 10 years. I mean, I've done other things that I was not the leader. I was just an investor. But as far as being the lead, I think those, those, yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. City Clerk?
We have a couple cards. Bob Watwood, I believe, is correct.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Bob Watwood. My address is 560... As I was saying, I'm not opposed to the low density or low-intensity commercial, but I'm questioning the compatibility and permissibility of a high-intensity commercial for this site, given the requirements of the city's own land development regulations. The property's at the intersection of State Road 405 or South Street, an arterial roadway, and Lane Avenue, a local street, not an arterial or collector street. Your future land use element goals and policies say as follows. Policy 1.9.1, sites for high-intensity commercial development shall be located with convenient and direct access at arterial intersections. Collector slash arterial intersections are acceptable, provided minimal access is necessary on the collector street. And then, policy 1.9.9, locations for high-intensity commercial land use shall be deemed appropriate, provided the following factors are additionally complied with. Sites for high-intensity commercial development shall be located near the intersections of arterials and/or collector roadways. And then, section 27, 28-7 of the general provisions of your land development regulation states specifically, all property-owned community commercial that is located in a downtown mixed-use land use, as shown on the adopted future land use map, shall comply with the following additional requirements. A, community commercial zoning shall be permitted where the property has frontage on and access only from a collector or higher roadway. This site is an intersection of an arterial roadway and a local street, not a collector or an arterial intersection. And it's got proposed access onto both. And given the regulations I just read, I don't understand how an interpretation of your code, or your provisions contemplate high-intensity commercial development across, or access onto Lane Avenue, which is a local street. I'd also like council to consider what Lane Avenue access means to the traffic pattern in the adjacent neighborhood. I know the P&amp;Z approved a condition that right turns on a Lane Avenue from the site be restricted in some unspecified manner, although I'm not sure how that can be done physically. I doubt that just directing a sign prohibiting right turns will be much of a deterrents. So, please look at my map, and give thought to the fact that once you get to the rear or south end of this property, you have to make four quick, almost 90-degree turns with Lane Avenue, then heading further into a strictly single-family residential area, and eventually terminating at Park Avenue, by way of five different residential streets. This development is going to send or draw traffic to and from Park Avenue, past all the houses on five local, exclusively single-family streets. So, before voting, I'd ask, I'm sorry, that's my own, before voting, I would ask council and staff to closely review the applicable city regulations and consider this traffic pattern, consider getting a traffic analysis, and consider limiting ingress and egress to State Road 405 only, or at least require some material physical impediments to right turns on the Lane Avenue, but that's only if you're able to reasonably interpret your ordinance to allow commercial high-intensity access on the Lane Avenue in the first place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I'd like to keep going, because you're doing it all in one breath, man.
Pardon?
You're doing it all in one breath. That was impressive.
I...
Thank you.
I got, I didn't make it through last time.
And I felt bad that we had to interrupt you with the microphone thing, so, thank you very much for, for your feedback. City Clerk?
The last card is Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I have similar concerns from the last speaker spoke. I thought he did a very good job. Now, also, I'm concerned about, I see nowhere where, what is the, what is the highest height they can build on these different zonings? What's the highest height, height limitation?
I believe they said 35 feet.
How much?
I think they said 35 feet.
Is that correct?
The community commercial zoning does not have a height limitation. What it says is that if you go above 35 feet, then you have to increase the setback, one additional foot for every foot you go above 35. But in the area that's going to be designated, that would be designated as commercial, low-intensity, the max is 35 feet, unless you come to council.
I'm, I'm a no-height person. I, I'd like the limitation of something like 50 feet or something like that. That's, that's one thing I'd like. And I'd like the correction. They have a, it says in the, it says here that the, what is it? It says, on page three of five on my agenda, it says, an ordinance amending, amending ordinance number 5-1993. I don't know how many times I've told you guys that, that it's supposed to be 50-1993. And I think you'd make the correction. If I'm wrong, I'd like you to say, shame on me, three times. But if I'm right, I think you'd say, say 10 times, thank you. So, I'm asking you to make the correction from 5-1993 to 50-1993. And again, I'd like not to have a high, the high, big, high buildings there. And we've, this is a low-rise community, and 35 feet is high enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. City Clerk, any other cards? Any rebuttal? Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Member Moscoso?
Yeah. Is it possible to have an ingress and egress on South Street?
Yes.
So, act, so it doesn't have to go out to Lane? And then, that would comply with the comprehensive plan based off of the access, right, being on a collector, or an arterial, I'm sorry?
With the site plan, when it's submitted, we'll review it, but I would imagine most likely they'll ask for an entrance off of South Street, off of State Road 405. Lane Avenue, it wouldn't be prohibited to have a secondary access. So, they could do that there as well. Many examples of local roads like this being used is that secondary access for commercial development.
And can I ask why a traffic study wasn't included?
We, that would, there's nothing that requires a traffic study. Council could certainly ask for that, but we didn't see a need for it at this point. We would definitely ask for it potentially at the site plan stage, considering the potential development, build-out scenario that you could see on this property, if this is approved.
Yeah. So, I would agree at that meeting, it seemed like most people were wanting commercial, not residential, but traffic was a big issue. And so, for me, I think that would be important to have, because that was the main concern I heard. Also, they didn't want people going out on Lane, so, you know, I feel like they're doing some compromises as well. And I think you, you did a great job of, you know, working with the community. And so, my personal preference would be to have the ingress and egress on South Street, and perhaps have a traffic study, if possible.
Thank you, Member Moscoso. Member Nelson?
I think, I have to say, you convinced me on the commercial high-intensity. But I would say, I like the idea of a 20-foot buffer on that south side. And I believe Jacob said he's willing to do no buildings on that south parcel. So, my other request would be ingress, egress, at least one on South Street. And no turn on Lane Avenue, no, is that left turn? Right turn? Right. No right turn on Lane Avenue. And I think with that, I, I can do this.
Thank you, Member Nelson. And this is maybe a separate issue, but why did they open that up between Lane and the rest of the neighborhood years ago? Does anybody know?
I don't have that answer.
Okay.
Okay.
It was school-related, I believe.
Okay. I mean, that makes sense, so the kids can, you know, probably walk to school and whatnot. But I don't know, maybe that's something we can take up later to prevent any future issues, because it... any future issues, because, I mean, I don't know how practical it is to drive through that neighborhood. I've tried to cut through and I got lost more than I got through. So, I don't know. I think it's easier to take a right on South Street and hit Park, but, you know, that's just my opinion. So, yeah. With that being said, I don't see any further discussion. Close the public hearing at this time. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve ordinance number 4-2025.
Ma'am?
Yeah.
May I ask if, you might want to ask the applicant how they feel about any particular conditions?
Oh, I have this.
I didn't hear you propose conditions in your motion yet.
We just got thumbs up behind you.
I got two thumbs up behind you.
We would agree to, let's go over them. No right, no southbound turn on Lane Avenue. Correct. Ingress, egress on South Street, assuming we can get DOT to do that for us, which we, to the west, we can. A 20-foot buffer and a 200-foot building setback from the south. So within the CLI, future land use.
No building.
No building.
And where's the 20-foot buffer?
On the south side.
Do I have to do those again?
I would say so.
Oh.
How it was written and how it was read for the record. So you're going to amend the record.
You're mean.
The attorney would agree.
We're move to approve ordinance number 4-2025, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60-1988, which adopted the comp plan of the city of Titusville, by amending the future land use designation on land located at 800 Lane Avenue, from downtown mixed-use education on conservation to downtown mixed-use commercial high intensity and commercial low intensity.
With the conditions of?
With the conditions.
With the conditions would be applied to the zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Not the land use.
Second?
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion?
Sorry, these motions including the conditions that the applicant agreed upon.
For the zoning, it will be in the second.
For the zoning, okay. Sorry.
All right. Don't see any further discussion. City Clerk, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Okay. Now, may I?
You may.
Move to approve ordinance number 5-2025 and ordinance amending ordinance number 5-1993 by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by referencing, by reference, by changing the zoning classification on land located 800 Lane Avenue from public and open space and recreation, zoning just raised to community commercial on 10.9, 10.19 acres? Okay.
I have a motion.
With conditions.
Wait, wait, wait.
With conditions.
With the conditions. This one needs to have the conditions. I assume I have to read them again? Okay. With a 20-foot buffer on the south side, in agreement, there will be no building on the area, the 200 feet on the south side, labeled commercial low intensity, no south turn on Lane Avenue, and ingress and egress on 405 if possible.
All right. The motion is completed.
Second.
It was a friendly amendment to the second. All right. Any further discussion? I don't see any. City Clerk?
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you very much. City Manager?
Onto item 9B, which is small-scale comprehensive plan amendment number 8-2024 for a property located at 1717 Barna Avenue, referred to as Royal Manor Town Homes. The public hearing was originally scheduled for January 14, 2025. At the January 14, 2025 meeting, council directed staff to send this item back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review. The item is currently scheduled to be reviewed by Planning and Zoning Commission on March 4, 2025, and the public hearing is scheduled to be held on March 11, 2025. The dates for both meetings are being re-advertised. Staff recommends that you table the regular meeting, you table this to the regular meeting on March 11, 2025, at the applicant's request.
Thank you, City Manager. Can I have a motion?
Move to table small-scale comp plan amendment number 8-2024 to the city council meeting on March 11, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion? Any cards, City Clerk? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. City Manager?
Onto items, ordinances, first reading, item 10A, which is small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, number 10-2024 for a property on Granis Avenue Quatroplex. This is the first reading. It contains two ordinances, ordinance number 8-2025 and 9-2025. And Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as your local planning agency, recommended approval of this item 7-0. The public hearing is scheduled at your regular meeting on February 25, 2025 at 6:30. The city attorney will read the ordinances for the record.
Ordinance number 8-2025, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60-1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville, by amending the future land use designation on .3 plus-minus acres of land, having Bovard County Partial ID Number 213533784.01, from commercial high intensity to high-density residential, providing for severability, repeal conflicting ordinances, providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 9-2025, an ordinance amending ordinance number 5-1993 of the city of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference, by changing the zoning classification on .3 plus-minus acres of land, having Bovard County Partial ID Number 213533784.01, for the community commercial CC zoning district to the multifamily high-density residential R3 zoning district, providing for severability, repeal conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much, City Attorney. City Clerk, are there any cards?
One card. Stan Johnston.
You're passed, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
All right. I just wanted to make sure. All right. Any discussion? All right. See none. City Manager?
Onto old business. This is item 11A, Development Review Process. At your December 10, 2024 meeting, Mayor Connors requested additional information on timelines for development review, including site, civil engineering, storm, traffic, landscaping, and utility review. Council provided visibility on this request. Mr. Parrish will provide you the information that we've researched.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
Just looking at the time, I was potentially wondering if we could table this item, so we have time to talk about the RFP going out. I think I want to spend more time on that. In this one, I don't want us to run out of time. In this one, I feel like I can wait on.
At council's direction. So if you make that motion, then put that on the table.
I would move to table item 11A to the next council meeting.
Second. All right. I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, sorry. All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
City Manager?
Under new business, this is 12A, Request for Proposal, RFP for City Manager Selection Firm. On January 31, I announced my intention to retire from the city of Titusville. I agreed to stay on as city manager for a minimum of 60 days or as required longer to ensure seamless transition for the management leadership. The first step of this selection process for a new city manager, using the prior selection process, we issued a RFP, Request for Proposal, to solicit bids from search firms to identify, evaluate, and submit potential candidates for this position. Upon completion of the RFP process and evaluation committee consisting of senior staff, will evaluate, scope, and rank the responsive proposals received. The top three qualified firms will then be recommended to city council for their final selection of the firm selected to carry out the city manager selection search. The RFP was issued on February 6. The proposals are due back on February 28. We, our goal is to have this to you by 11, your 11-March meeting for your approval. And then off we go.
Thank you, City Manager. Is there any cards, City Clerk?
Yes, we have two cards. Tony Shifflow?
Well, Ms. Shifflow is coming up. I did provide you some samples of what the search firms put together as a pamphlet. The one was of my selection in 2014. The other one was just a random one that we get these requests all the time. Then I believe Member Moscoso provided you the one from Palm Bay.
Thank you.
Tony Shifflow, Historic Norwood House. As this is an event that many people and citizens in the city of Titusville have been looking forward to, I have looked over the executive search and recruiting services proposal, and I found that there are places, eight places, Member Stokel, for citizen involvement in the process of looking for another city manager. And under the scope of work and services, the development of a candidate profile in accordance with city council's direction and probably citizen input, development of a screening process, review of initial candidates with the city council, and citizens input again, and facilitation of the final interview process with suggested interview questions, which could come from your public, some of the questions. And then under the task one of marketing, there were, there was, developed the profile for the city manager after consultation with city council and citizen input, because it says collectively, individually, as well as staff and others will identify management skills and style that are appropriate for the position. I'm sure your citizens have a lot of ideas on that. Task number three, assessment, number three under task three assessment, to facilitate the selection process and final interview, including development of interview questions. I'm sure several of us would have some suggested questions we would like you to entertain. Under task four, reference and background check, you know, background checks, blah, 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 but should include as well the applicant's ability to effectively interact and communicate with the community and coworkers, both publicly and privately. And task five, consulting, to review the current compensation package and recommend changes if necessary. I know your citizens have a lot of thoughts on that. And so with those eight opportunities for the citizens, Member Cole, to participate, how are you going to deny us? Thank you for letting me put something into your ideas.
Thank you, Ms. Tony. Any other cards, City Clerk?
The last card is Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston. Now, this is a time I'm not going to be very pleasant, because here's what's happened, what I've seen in the city of Titusville. What's happened is that, is that like, for example, we have this project, SNJ Oaks, the survey is bad. It's three-foot off, three-foot off on the, and it's known by Brad Parrish. He showed it to me, and yet the city still approves it. There's no way. I'm an engineer. I'm a surveyor. There's no way you can genuinely have a platting of a project in which you're three-foot off on the survey. Other surveyors are going to say it's nonsense. Yet this still continues today. Okay. We have another example. We have the Stormwater Management Plan, city of Titusville, says, hey, you know, if you don't maintain your ditches, it doesn't work. The city of Titusville has numerous ditches that outfall into the St. John's River. There's, I've gone over to you many and many times, is that all these outfalls under I-95 from Foxseg Road to State Road 50, they're huge. Seven-foot box, three, three-foot, six-foot, so forth. These box culverts, huge of them. And they lead to what? Ditches that aren't maintained. And so it appears that you don't understand when I say water flows downhill. When you don't let it go where it's supposed to go. Where does it go? So what we have is big problems. We have also, we have, we have dams that are constructed in the city of Titusville. Dams constructed in the city of Titusville. We don't, we don't do compensatory store. We don't survey what the flooding does. But yet we approve them.
Mr. Johnson, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Can you tell me how this relates to the RFP process to look for a new city manager?
Oh, yes, I can.
Okay. I'm just trying to follow you.
Absolutely. In other words, what you have is a failure system right now. You have closed doors. Anytime I come to ask these questions, no professional engineer will answer my, give me, answer that question. The city manager, he has closed doors. And so in other words, you get information that is, that is not professional whatsoever, and you continue what you're doing. Everything I've told you right now is illegal. Everything. Everything I've told you is illegal. And yet the city of Titusville, they approve it because of him. You've got you somebody right now, as far as I can see, is, he's not, he's not legitimate and everything. He has closed doors. He promised that, he promised me, before he was hired, I'm going to do the golden rule, do unto others. He has done nothing of that with Stan Johnston, a person who's been here for over 50 years. And I love this, this city, and as far as I'm concerned, this guy's been destroying it. And you've praised him with $228,000 salary. It's complete nonsense. You should have, he should have, you should have never kept him. You should, what, right now, what you should do is take his pension away.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
And I know that's true. Y'all listen to me someday.
City Clerk, any other cards? Counsel? Member Stokel?
Yes. Okay. One, I think we need to take our time, and I appreciate the city manager giving us that time. Since then, I've tried to do as much research as I could on this to be as educated as possible on this, as this is new for me. We have not gone through this process before. I did not, like, Member Moscoso came prepared and had handouts. I just emailed you all. This handout I got from the Florida League of Cities, it's from FCCMA, which is the Florida City County Managers Association, their search guide for when you need a higher city manager. I have presented with this organization in the past. They are well-recognized nationally, the ICMA, and they have a really comprehensive guide on some things that we should do. And I just wanted to highlight a few things for us to be thinking about. Timetable, it takes a lot longer than we may anticipate. Making sure to check our charter, which I know Mayor Connors has already advised us to keep doing that. In there, it does say there's a residency requirement, so I think that's important to know. In our charter, it says you must live in the city of Titusville. Look at the current job description of the city manager. Think about, and this is really important, I can't stress this enough, we need to kind of come to an agreement on the characteristics and the criteria that we're looking for in a city manager. I'll tell you right now, there, part of the process is, when we get applicants, they will watch our meetings. And my fear is if we're not all on the same page and we're kind of having strife between us on our goals, that's a nightmare for any city manager to kind of walk into. And I, my fear would be that we would potentially lose good candidates because of that. So I think that's really important. Compensation benefits in employment agreement. Member Moscoso, what she passed out with Palm Bay, their salary is up to $252,000. So I think we need to keep that in mind. The Cape Canaveral city manager is now, they're looking for a new city manager. So now we're the third one in the county trying to compete. So we need to make sure our pay is competitive. Status report on organization in our projects, I think that will be important, if we will be providing any housing assistance in an outline of our recruitment plan. They also talk about two different ways that I think for us we can do. We can do something in-house, which I think will be very difficult. Palm Bay is, I'm kind of, I'm a little jealous. They got Scott Morgan. Palm Bay is, I'm kind of, I'm a little jealous, they got Scott Morgan, who was the city manager of West Melbourne, great guy, met him several times at Space Coast League of Cities. He, every council member I talked to at West Melbourne really loved him. He's now the interim in Palm Bay, and I've talked to some of their council members, and he's doing phenomenal work. I tried to talk to him last night. He's got a contract with Palm Bay right now, and he's really trying to retire, so I don't think that we would potentially get him to kind of come in as a consultant. But the other option is outsourcing, and that's, to the city manager's point, that's how we were able to get our current city manager, and it is, in my opinion, probably the best way to go. The other things to keep in mind, as was mentioned by some of our citizens, is who's involved in the process, so obviously us. We might have department heads meeting, as well as setting up some type of community engagement component. The good part about hiring out, they are really good at doing the advertising, making sure that we get what we need, collecting the resumes, going through them, scheduling the interviews. We would need to think about the manager profile, again, the compensation, and what our outreach strategy would be. Just looking at the timeline, I would say at least three to four months. Other things to think about, that goes a little bit into detail about the process, where they would go through the applicants, we could potentially see all of them if we wanted to, and they start to narrow them down for us on who's qualified. The interviews, obviously, because of sunshine law, we would probably do individual interviews, we could have them come up, we could do, I think the city manager said before, kind of a round robin, where they go between different rooms and talk with different people. This was important, I found out, is using our city attorney, that there are questions that we can and cannot ask, and I think we would rely on our city attorney to know what those questions are and what would be appropriate. And then also, we would need to, anybody that we invite over, probably reimburse them for their expenses. There's also in this document, which I, I found nice, it lists different agencies that you can use, I think, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight of them they reference in here, and the one we used last time is actually on this list. They go over what the services they will typically provide, what their vetting process is like, they give you a sample of a manager profile. Our city manager gave us what was used last time, this would definitely need to be updated, as where we currently are in our current challenges, I think are much different than what we had before. Palm Bay's is a great example as well. There's also, when it comes to salary, the Florida League of Cities has some resources on that, and we could also reference our previous pay, pay plan study that we've already done. So I think those would be two great resources when it comes to that. They also have on here a whole list of where to advertise for the position, and then the background information. It does have a list of do's and don'ts, as far as questions on things related to age, race, religion, marital status, what you can do with references, organizations they're a part of, and then the other thing I would advise is to look at the current contract. It follows, when I had the current contract, it follows the sample contract that's in here, so that is what, whoever we end up hiring, we would want to kind of follow that same format and update it as needed. It, it goes in detail quite well over things that we need to consider. So I, I like the track that we're going on. I think something else that we need to think about is if we keep our current city manager on through March 31st, which I think we should, this process will take longer. At that time, do we want to bring in potentially an interim? Do we want to keep our current city manager on? What does that process look like? I think we need to be thinking about that. The good part is, I feel a little bit not too rushed, knowing that he will still be here. And then the other thing I want to say is, I, this is what I went and got my PhD in, is public administration, so I feel like I know this world a little bit, I wanted to understand it more. And what's interesting, and just through my conversations with the city manager, what we do up here is primarily with Brad in the planning process. What Scott does, that's just a small piece of everything that he manages, and I, I don't feel like maybe we haven't done a great job of communicating that, but it's a lot. And our current city manager has excelled, in my opinion, in what government should be providing, those essential things, emergency management, fixing our infrastructure, having a balanced budget, taking us through COVID, taking us through these hundred-year storms that are only supposed to happen a hundred years, happening more frequently. Our emergency management, our fire department, our police department, making changes, I'm the one that requested the org chart, and giving staff the flexibility to do what they need to do without micromanaging them. I think the employees that we hire, they are experts in their field. Are they perfect? No, but I think our current leader has allowed them the flexibility, has pushed for professional development, has given them the space to do that, and that is something that I hope that our new city manager will allow them to do, because I think it's allowed them to kind of propose changes and have that. So I, I do think that we will have some tough shoes to fill. I'm hopeful that we'll get somebody as good, but I, I do think that we will find it more challenging, just from conversations I've had. I've seen them bring in somebody that's really great at budget and then lacks in other areas, and to me, I personally feel like we have taken our current city manager for granted in those things of emergency management and knowing, and I've been here eight years, and I've seen, like, every time a hurricane's come, or anything that's come, like, Scott is right there, and I, I have full confidence and trust in him to do that. And again, those are the core essential skills of what's needed to run a city and run government. It's going to be difficult to find someone that can provide that stability, and then some of those other things that we, we may want to work on. I, I think it will be very challenging. So just some things I feel like that we should keep in mind.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Moscoso.
Yeah, I, I just want to thank Scott for your willingness to stay on and help us through this process, and I truly appreciate that. And I'm very happy that we have a Member Stokel's experience to help us through this. For many of us, this is our first time. So I did reach out to, on my trip, I talked to a council member from Palm Bay, and they did not use, they did not, not outsource, but they've been very proactive with their interim city manager, and they received 69 applications. However, I really like the, the idea of outsourcing, so I'm glad that it's working for them, but I really like how it's all laid out, and especially since we haven't, I mean, I'm very new, I would love to see it go through this process. One thing I did, I talked to many elected officials, and I, I was just kind of explaining what, what was happening, and they all said that we need to do an internal audit, and we need to get somebody from the outside to do an audit, and so that a new city manager knows exactly what they're walking into, and that was the advice from every single council member who has gone through this process. And I think it makes sense, because we, we want to know where we stand, and we don't want to dupe anyone into this job and say, here's a pretty package, you know, if there might be some issues. And so I, they just said that's best practices, and, you know, even a council member from Tallahassee said, yep, that's the first thing you want to do, and you want to do it soon, so that you have that information available. And then the other thing I would like to discuss is perhaps, you know, since we have our city manager, you know, laying out a transition plan for the replacement, you know, kind of doing a bit of an exit interview that will help us in the future, and I'm sure that you, you've thought of this too, but, you know, what are the biggest things that are face, are problems facing our city? What are the challenges with working with our current council? All of those things that I think can help us improve. So those would be things that I would like to ask, kind of, as we do an exit interview.
Thank you, Member Moscoso. And to just give you a heads up, the city does have an internal auditor, and if you like, I mean, you can obviously request those audits. I just requested those myself, because again, we were talking about internal audit, so I, I've been kind of going through things to see where our deficiencies are, and that is something that I was hoping to bring up in a charter review process, is the fact that the internal auditor reports to the person they're auditing. So it'd be my suggestion, if council agrees, since I don't have a charter review commission, to, you know, propose a charter amendment where we add a third employee that reports to us, which would be the internal auditor. But again, that discussion can happen at a later time, but I just wanted to let you guys know what I was thinking and what I was doing when we're having these conversations, because I, I want to know where our deficiencies are, so we can help make improvements from a policy standpoint.
And the other, we, we are currently undergoing our annual external audit, so that'll be completed in time to pass that along to the new candidate as part of the process. It's called a CAFER.
Thank you. All right, so I believe this was under new business, request for a proposal for an RFP. I'm assuming we needed a motion to approve the RFP that was already set out?
Nope, this is your information, unless you were choosing to go another direction with it.
All right. Well, I look forward to seeing all the firms submit their RFP. Hopefully, we get more than one choice, because I really hope we don't get one choice. Like, let's, let's look at many firms. All right, city manager.
On to item B, which is the invocation resolution policy, and we've prepared, based on council's direction, a resolution and policy, and we'd like for you to consider the adoption of the proposed invocation and resolution number two dash 2025 for meeting invocation policies.
Yeah, I can read the whole thing, are you?
No.
Is there any cards, city clerk?
Yes, sir, we have two cards. Tony Shifflow.
I confessed already, I'm a Democrat, I'm going to confess, I'm a Presbyterian too. But I do oppose, and you know this, having a prayer. So I read over your ordinance, and what I want to know is two things. What will you do to the preacher who gets up here, who starts proselytizing or disparaging a particular faith, which all throughout the ordinance, they wrote up, it says, that's not going to happen. What are you going to do if somebody gets up here and starts talking about them Jewish people or something like that? You can turn off the microphone and call for the police, I suppose, but that's going to look bad for some preacher. And my other question is, couldn't you put, like you do on the citizens, a time limit? Have you ever been in church, and you know how the preacher gets started on that sermon, and by golly, it just goes on and on, and your lunch is waiting at home, and the kids are getting, eh, put a time limit on it. You make us only have three minutes, you gonna let some preacher guy get up here and speak as long as he wants to? I'm gonna use my three minutes, because it's late at night, see? I'm not praying, but I am proselytizing. Oh, gee, many, put a limit, please, on the length of time, that's a request, and I won't be rude during the prayer times. I will pledge that.
Thank you, Ms. Shifflow. Any, there's another card, right?
Yes, the last card is Stan Johnston.
Let's, let's, let's do it, let's do it right now. Lord, I just pray that we'll do the right thing to your glory, and that you're just one God, and we need help. So we just, we, we need to follow the universal law, golden rule, that do unto others, and we're not doing it. We need to obey our laws, and we're not doing it. It seems like we really need prayer, because it seems like we could do better. We could certainly do better. Thank you, Lord, amen. I've been involved with this kind of stuff. Fact is, I went down, we had a, had a Muslim who was, was, was being somewhat tortured by some people, and I, I worked with, worked with some, some Jews, Christians, and Muslim religions, we had all three religions, those, those three religions together, and we, we had a prayer meeting down there in Rock Lake area. And so that was a good thing that happened, and they didn't, they didn't proselytize like in saying, it's got to be in Jesus's name or something like that, but it, it worked very well. But I don't know if you can do it in government. It wasn't government when I was, once I was involved in. So I just pray things will work out well. I don't know how, what, what's going to work, but maybe some, sometimes it won't work very well. But I think we need something, because we have problems in this government, and it's spiritual problems, big time. So I'm, I'm praying that, that whatever we do, we understand, maybe, hopefully, it'll be, everything works good for those who what? Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. God bless you.
Any other cards?
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor Cole.
I agree with Tony that we do, we should put some guidelines on the amount of time that a minister comes up, or whoever comes up to speak, and, you know, somewhere between three and five minutes or something like that, because some ministers, like Tony said, will talk forever. So is that, that's not in there, is it?
I don't think it is.
It isn't.
No. I think we should include some sort of limit in there.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Member Nelson.
I was going to suggest three minutes. If you have, have never heard Joe Robinson preach?
Oh, my God.
Oh, jeez. You know, there would be no lunch, you'd be getting close to dinner, and you'd still be sitting there.
I'd be eating breakfast.
It is a privilege to talk to God. Thank you.
All right. Hey, I'd like to keep us on task, because we only got 15 minutes.
So I would suggest three minutes. And to Tony's point, I think maybe we should put something in here that if you violate these rules, we have the right to not invite you back.
City attorney?
If you, if you would like to add something?
Yeah, please.
That, you know, in the event you're in violation now.
Well, I mean, it says invocation may not advance any particular political, social movement in a manner, that would suggest the city's involved in such a movement. So if somebody gets up here, it goes bonkers. I think we should be able to say, no.
Well, then again, what is bonkers? And, and then you're going to get into the speech issue, and, but I think you, you know, certainly covered in here, and I think, you know, if, if they do, they could be warned and asked to sit down, you know, if you need to do that.
And to the city attorney's point, I think you guys know me well enough that whatever the rules council lays out, I will enforce.
Okay. So I think we would enforce, I think it's very, fairly thorough policy on do's and don'ts, and I, and I would trust that you could enforce those rules.
Okay. So I would make a motion to adopt the proposed invocation resolution number two dash 2025 with a three-minute rule.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can you call the vote, please?
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Yay, we did it. Thank you, Ms. Tony. Yeah. All right. All right.
Well, you know, it's not her favorite, but...
All right, we're, we're pressed for time, and I'm trying to get you out of here by 10:30, Ms., or Member Nelson. Petitions and requests from the public, non-agenda items. Anybody want to stand up and say anything? Okay, thank you. All right, on to item number 14, mayor's report. If you check out my report, you can see I'm, I'm pretty active, pretty busy, being out in the public, and I want to just touch about two things. I received an official communication from the director of the Department of Health here in Brevard County to make sure that we receive the Surgeon General's guidance on water fluoridation, what council does with that, council does with that, but I said I would bring it up in my report. Also, I have a letter to Congressman Herodopolis that I would like your guys' approval to send, advocating for his involvement to help out our, our airport that has several federal grants that they're applying for in this upcoming grant cycle to improve the airport, taxiing runway, and, and all the things they have going out there, and a healthy airport helps our economy, so I'm hoping you guys will approve that. And then the second letter is to ask for his help to complete the coast-to-coast bike trail. So the bike trail is a state project that's supposed to go coast-to-coast, however, they can't get across the federal lands on the other side of the bridge, so it actually stops at Parish Park, and so we kind of need some, some political movement there to kind of just push it. It's not our money, it's the state's money, they just couldn't get through the, the federal government guidelines, so we're just asking for his help. Whether he'll be able to help or not, I have no idea. But again, just trying to... But again, just trying to complete that, so we can continue to be a trail city. So with that, I'll let you guys discuss. If you guys approve these letters being written, then they will be sent out.
We have one card for the mayor's report.
Thank you, city clerk. Who's the card?
Stan Johnston.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Wait, wait, no, I didn't say...
Oh.
Are you going to do, I think you're going to vote on these letters individually, or together?
I mean, it depends on what council wants to do. If there's an issue with either one of them, we can break them up, but the report is just one report.
Okay. I appreciate, Wanda, letting you know is that I do have cards on anything new, and this is all new. So fortunately, I think all of those sound good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay? So you have my support.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Member Moscosa?
So are these letters something that we are voting on?
You're authorizing the mayor to send this out? Yes.
So I do have some questions about the letters, if I could be honest. So as we were talking about legislative priorities, I haven't seen that the airport is one of those. And so I feel like we are kind of sending mixed messages. If you're sending Congressman Herodopolis a letter about funding for the airport, and then we have, you know, our legislative priorities for our city. And so the second letter about the, you know, increased funding for the trail system, that one, for me, makes a little bit more sense, because that is in our priorities. But I'm afraid that if we are all going to be asking for different things, it could be confusing. And so I think we do need to narrow down what it is we're asking. And with this letter as well, I mean, I have just, I think it's a lot to put on, in my opinion, kind of on the mayor's report. I know that it's, it seems like a simple letter, but I do have questions, like, is this something that, where are these numbers coming from? Because we're asking for very specific numbers. So what's the project? How is it benefiting the city? Has this been vetted by our city staff? And so I just have a lot of questions about this letter.
Okay, I can help answer that. It's not our project. It's the airports, and they're operated by, you know, Tyco and that regional board. They have applied for federal grants in these amounts. So they're already applying to the federal government. We're just asking him to put it in a good word, right? Because at the end of the day, we want those federal dollars to keep flowing, and help advocate for the funding of these from the federal level. So this has nothing to do with the city. This is just us advocating for the airport in our community.
I know, it doesn't have, I mean, it does have something to do with the city, because the letter is going out from the city of Titusville. You are the mayor of Titusville. And so I just think with decisions like this, you know, I'm all for, we need funding there. And Sarah, this might be more your wheelhouse, but I really just want to make sure that we are focusing on the projects and the priorities that we have here. Because you don't get many asks, to be honest. You go up, we just went up with, you know, the league, and we had four priorities, and that was it, and you have about three minutes. And so I just want to make sure that we're getting the funding for the projects that we really, really need.
If you can comment, I'm sorry, but this is the mayor's thing, which we don't usually comment on, but it's something you're voting on.
Ma'am, you'll need to get to the microphone.
Well, we haven't decided to vote yea or nay yet. I'm asking for motions. It'll get to that point, and I'll open it up for...
Okay, so it will be a point that citizens can comment on this? That's all I want to know, because I would like...
Yeah, we're at council discussion right now.
That's fine, but it doesn't normally happen.
I appreciate that. Member Stokel?
Yes. Wyne, I appreciate you putting these letters in here. I don't know how often we've done this in the past, so I appreciate you getting involved and trying to support, you know, send a message in support of certain projects. I think to Member Moscosa's point is, and this goes back to kind of what I've said at several council meetings, is I think it's important that we all get on the same page. So if this is now federal to our congressman, then what is going to be our message to state? Because, yeah, if we are saying, yes, this is important, we support them, and then we find out that actually, no, we want federal dollars for something else, he can come back and say, well, you asked for this, and I gave you this, but now you're asking. So not that I'm against this, and I really actually like that you put the trails on here, because that's something that I've been wanting. And I'm like, hello, when can we go out there? And we can't touch that. And so I definitely would like to see that one on there, because that's something that we just haven't. And I honestly don't know if we've asked the federal government or sent a letter like this in the past. So I would like us to do this. I just want us to kind of come to agreement. I will tell you right now, I'm definitely in favor of the trails. That is something that we've talked about numerous times. The airport one, I may want to wait a meeting on, just to see if there are other things. I know Member Moscosa was up there talking about some federal issues with the Florida League of Cities, may want to have more information on that. And then I think that we should start talking about our state priorities. Because I know you put out a video on the Mayor Minute about, like, State Road four or five, which we have heard several, those that have, those of us that have been here for a while, trying to widen that. And I think that's a state priority, and how do we want to go about that? How do we ask for that to potentially get moved up the list? I just would like us to be on the same page about those state issues as well.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Point of information, do we have any federal priorities? I haven't seen any.
I don't think so.
Okay. So while we work on those for maybe the next fiscal year, we can at least say, hey, this is in the grant funding cycle in this upcoming year. You know, we want to support our airport, given the fact that we're about to see a space boom. We need to make sure that airport is operational, because those are, you know, tax dollars for our city and our commercial spaces, so that we can encourage commercial spaces to be out there. And I think that's what everybody wants. They don't want to see, you know, all these overdevelopment, right? I heard a lot on the campaign trail that we need more commercial. Well, excuse me, I get emotional apparently when I talk about it. Well, this is, you know, how we do it. We got to support where the commercial is. And again, it's not our project, but it is within our city limits. So that's why the ask. And while we figure out our federal priorities, I think it's a good thing. So, but I'll let council decide on what they want to do. Vice Mayor Cole?
I honestly don't have a problem with us sending a letter in support of the airport, basically, because there may be a time when we need help for their support. And we're not asking for it, we're only saying we support these projects. So in that aspect, I don't have as much of a problem as maybe you have with it. I understand what you're saying. But I'm, my concept is, we help, I look at the airport as being our neighbor, we help our neighbor, and our neighbor will help us.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Member Moscosa?
No, I understand, and I agree. I just, these are all new projects I've never heard of. And so, I mean, I definitely think we need to push for more federal funding. And, you know, one of the things, I know that I was kind of looking into this a little bit, is a lot of this is done through grants with FAA. And that's one thing I asked about, we don't even have a grant writer. And so I think there's so many ways that we can get funding, and this might be an avenue too, but I think that's also, it just kind of opened the door for other questions of, how are we getting other types of funding? I think, you know, a letter is helpful. I think my only question is, I just haven't heard of this project. And so I want to make sure if something's going out from the city of Titusville, that I'm at least aware of what the project is and what that entails. And I think that's kind of a fair assessment.
I appreciate that. Member Stokel?
Yep. And also, another thing I just found out is, I guess, the federal guidelines for PFAS have been taken back. So that's, again, that's another federal issue that we may want to consider advocating for as well. I think when I spoke with Kevin and the city manager, I think we're still going to continue on testing and trying to do levels, but that, I was really hopeful to see that, and then to find that out. So I think there's more things, and I will tell you, overall, I am very glad that you're starting this process, because I think that we haven't done it before. And I would like to see Titusville get some funding, get some support. So thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah, just like Vice Mayor Cole said, they're doing all the work. We're just saying, hey, we support that project, because, well, a lot of them are in our city, some of them are on Merritt Island. But again, it's federal dollars from the FAA coming to Brevard County, and that's what we want. So that's all it was. But with that being said, is anybody willing to entertain a motion to approve these two letters, and then I'll get to discussion? I'll get to discussion after the motion. If there's no motion, there's no reason to discuss.
I'll make a motion to approve the two letters that the mayor has written for the trails and for the federal funding for the airport.
I'd second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? Dr. Orrock?
Yes, indeed, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking them. This is the issue I brought up before, and I'm just going to restate it. The problem is not with what you want to do, it's your process. It does not belong in the mayor's report. Because if, it was awkward for me, can I say something? I'm not supposed to say anything, but then, you know, you're not supposed to put forth motions or votes during this period. That's not what it's for. And it makes it awkward, and it made it difficult. And I can see lots of people are supporting the idea of what you're saying, but it's awkward for the city council members, too. So let's please make the mayor's report be what it's supposed to be. And if you have motions or votes, put them elsewhere where people have the opportunity to look them up and understand them first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So when the report was compiled, there's a section that says, "Letters for City Council Approval." It said, "None." It was apparently put on City Council Authorization, and right below it, it says, it describes the two letters, and I attached the two letters. So I'm just trying to be as transparent as possible, and let people know what I'm doing. And, because, you know, again, it was a request for authorization. So, Member Stokel, your lights on. So any further discussion?
Yes, I was just going to say, in regard to the process, these were on the agenda packet, so I'm okay voting on them. To the citizen that spoke, I would agree. If it's not in the agenda packet, I think that would be, it would come on the next agenda for the public to see. But both of these letters were in here, so I feel okay voting on them.
All right.
Just clarification, just a clarification question, then. Because I don't feel like I can speak on mayor's things, and that's...
You can.
I can, okay. My understanding...
Yeah, you put a card in like any other agenda item.
Okay, you do know that, that helps a lot. Thank you.
All right, and I'm going to table this motion, if possible. Can I have a motion to table real quick? Because I can't make the motion. I know, but I got to extend the meeting. It's 10:29.
Make a motion that we extend the meeting till 10:45.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. We're going another 15 minutes. Sorry, I just, I didn't want to bang the gavel and say we're done, you know what I mean? I just wanted to table it for a second, you know what I mean? Like, I just wanted to put it down. Okay, so I have a motion, I have a discussion on these two letters. We have had our discussion, the public has had input. Hopefully, everybody feels comfortable voting. All those in favor of the authorization of these two letters and that motion that was given, say aye, please.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And that concludes my report. Council reports.
Mayor, you have a travel expense, I believe, on your report, too?
Oh, sorry. It does not. Okay, so in last meeting, the council approved me going to Tallahassee, once with the Space Coast League of Cities, and once with the Chamber for Brevard County Tallahassee Advocacy Days. So this is the authorization for that in terms of budgeting. So any discussion? Member Stokel?
I think this was listed also on the budget amendment that we already approved earlier.
Yeah.
So I...
We're just making sure we're including it many times, I guess.
I move to approve, and I don't know if there's any cards on this item.
We do, we have a card. Stan Johnston.
You're good? Thank you.
You're forgetting something, Dick, is that we need to all applaud what you guys did today. How you handled that crisis we had today. Thank you. Good job. Let's hear it.
Seriously? Yeah, really?
The crisis, they didn't, they could, they could have had a crisis here.
All right, we're going to keep the quorum. Mr. Johnson has the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They didn't escalate.
Thank you. Member Nelson?
So since we already did the budget amendment, do we need to do the authorization?
I thought you approved it at your last meeting, with the budget amendment coming forward, yeah?
I thought so.
No, we approved the Tallahassee one. I don't think we approved the Brevard County Days one. This is a separate one.
Let's just double-check and make sure it's approved.
Move to approve travel authorization for Mayor Connors to attend Chamber, the Chambers Brevard County Advocacy Trip.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. City council members, Member Stokel?
Yes, I'll try to be really quick. Yesterday, Member Moscosa and Mayor Connors both attended with me our 55-year celebration for the Space Coast League of Cities. I think it was, I'm a little biased, but I think it was a pretty fun event. We had, I think, 13 past presidents were there. Also, our executive director for the Florida League of Cities was there. You guys can speak to it if you want. And then I'm sure I have other things, but I think they can wait till the other meeting. The last thing I wanted to say is, congratulations to our mayor on winning for under 40 this year. Yeah, wasn't there, but I heard your speech and saw some pictures, so congratulations on that.
Thank you. Member Moscosa?
Yeah, I'll make this quick. I do want to just say a recognition for Joe Richardson. He chose not to reapply for Planning and Zoning Commission, but I just want to thank him, and I know he's getting a certificate, but publicly thank him. He, you know, he had been elected to city council, I think he was the youngest city council member, yeah, 21. So he's served on city council, he's served on planning and zoning. I think it's like a total of 11 years on P&amp;Z, with seven as the chairman. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that. And I'll just go through quickly. We did the Save Our Indian River Lagoon with the clam drop, and a few of us were there. That was a really great experience. And then I just want to thank you for the opportunity to go to the Florida League of Cities. It was very eye-opening, and if I had more time, I would go into depth. But I did get to, we did get to meet with Congressman Mike Herodopolis, and he was a crowd favorite, because he took us on a tour of the Capitol. And a lot of the other congressmembers were just kind of busy. There's a lot going on up there, so I really appreciated that. But, you know, huge benefit was just connecting with other council members, so I appreciate the opportunity to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Moscosa. Member Nelson, anything?
I'm just going to say, after two years, fingers crossed, I got a call from Habitat for Humanities, and, fingers crossed, they are talking about coming up here, they have, I think, 13, 14, 15 infill lots within the next year and a half. So that would be just wonderful for some of our people.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Vice Mayor Cole?
I too want to add my congratulations to Mayor Connors. I was there, and I was very proud. It was a proud moment for me when I was there. That was a proud moment for me when I was there. And also, Mayor Connors and I were at the demonstration on Sunday to try to answer questions that we could and try to avoid what happened tonight. But we, that didn't work, but we were there anyway, so. And I think us being there helped with this situation tonight because a lot of people that were there on Sunday were here tonight. So seeing us here and seeing us there, I think it made it a little bit better, but we'll see what happens.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Member Moscosa?
So I, I do have one thing to add, and I think it is important that we bring this to attention. The, the family did have a memorial set up today on the property, and they've had it for a few days. And the Housing Authority actually went out and removed that memorial. They removed the balloons, they removed the, the flowers, and they put it in the trash. And they told them this is part of the process. And so I was quite upset that that happened because that can cause, obviously, an angry crowd. And so I went and, you know, asked them to replace those things. And so if you hear anything about that, that's, that was the situation. I hope that they go out and do that. I did also meet with the mom the next day and just, I kind of let her know, listen, we won't have answers for you, but you're welcome to come. And so also, kind of going out in the community, I think, I think moving forward, our main thing is going to be, we have to communicate as much as possible. And, and so I just wanted to, to add that. But, yeah, I think, you know, it was a tough situation tonight, and, and I, I, I don't know, it's a new experience for me, but I'm, I'm thankful that, you know, it ended the way it did. And, and just encouraging us to continue to reach out to, you know, community members and making sure we have those conversations, I think it's important.
Thank you, Member Moscosa. Okay, I was just making sure you were finished. City Manager?
I've got one action item under my report, and it's to reschedule your 25 March 2025 meeting. At your request, due to scheduling conflicts, City Council has requested that we find an alternate date. The date we've selected is the following Thursday, which is the 27th of March 2025. We'll have both the, the 5:30 as well as the 6:30 meeting.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk?
Yes, we have a card, Stan Johnston.
Go for it.
Thank you, Stan. Any discussion from council? Yeah, we got the vote.
So he said March 27?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, 27th is Thursday, and I believe you're, you're getting back on Wednesday?
Yeah.
Sorry, that date was our mock city council.
Yeah, we, we're changing that.
You're changing that? Okay. Thank you for that.
I knew, I was like, wait a minute.
Oh.
Okay, that's, that's perfect.
I'll make a motion that we move city council meeting from the 25th to the 27th of March.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And then just a couple of information items. Next week, you'll be doing your city council public engagement meetings. And we also have some community, other engagement, the student, student council advisory awards. That's the one we do at Titusville High School. That's scheduled for April 28. And then we're all, already working on the Fourth of July celebration. Subject to questions.
Thank you, City Manager. Seeing none. There's any cards on this? City Clerk, is there any cards on City Manager's report?
Just Stan.
Okay. Thank you, Stan. All right, City Attorney?
I just had the one item for information. The District Court of Appeals considered the Speak Up Titusville corrected motion for hearing and denied that motion on January 30, 2025. This is just for your information.
Thank you, City Attorney. Is there any cards on the City Clerk?
Yes, Tony Shifflow.
I had a feeling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want all my time. Tony Shifflow, Tropic Street. A Florida appellate court recently ruled that Floridians don't have a right to clean rivers, lakes, bays, aquifers, or wetlands. "We know of no provision that is granted in the state constitution, which specifically provides a citizen the right to have a body of water that flows, exists in its natural form, is free of pollution, and which maintains a healthy ecosystem," the judge has said. And specifically noted that in 2020, our state legislature, whom we really need to talk with, took from local governments the authority to pass laws giving citizens any rights to any aspect of the natural world. "A week before the Florida court ruling, the Montana Supreme Court ruled that Montanans have a constitutional right to a clean and healthy environment, as specified in a 1972 amendment to the state's constitution. We reject the argument that the Montana Legislature, intending the strongest all-encompassing